The School Board Work Session begins in two minutes. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in two minutes. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in two minutes. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute.[89.89][89.89][S01. Good morning, everyone. I now call the August 15th, 2024 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. Mirroring and modeling how our students begin each day, I ask that you please pause with us for a moment of silence at this time. Thank you. I'll now read our Board Commitment Statement. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success. I'll now ask our School Board Attorney to explain the rules for this public work session. Good morning, Attorney Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call speakers' names in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout the meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Good morning, Ms. Martinez. Would you please provide the proof of publication for today's work session?
Good morning. The notice for the August 15th, 2024 work session was published in the Ocala Gazette on August 2nd, 2024. Proof of publication has been attached to Board Doc's under Proof of Publication.
Thank you, ma'am. And we'll now begin the work session with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing. Good morning, Dr. Gullett.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, great to see you again this first week of school. It's still hard to believe we're still in the first week. I have two briefings this morning, and I will begin with inviting Dr. Hembrook up. She is going to provide an update to our alternative learning model. As you know, we've made changes this year, and she'll provide an update of how things are going with that. So, thank you, Dr. Hembrook.
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Thrower, Vice Chair Conrad, Board Members, and Superintendent Gullett. So, alternative learning has been very busy since our last work session on August the 1st. So, I appreciate the time to share some highlights and some of the work that has been in place and what we've been able to accomplish, including many collaborative conversations. So, students who have committed egregious infractions have been assigned to Marion Technical Institute, and students who have committed non-aggregious offenses have been assigned to one of the six district pass sites, leaving space for traditional pass students. Dr. Brewer and I met with the principals of the six district pass sites, explaining that process and how we were assigning those students, and that we were leaving space for traditional pass students at those sites as well. Student Discipline Team met with all of the past teachers during pre-planning week to also share this plan, the new plan for alternative learning, and it was a great time to answer any of their questions about what their past classroom would look like, and then problem solve together. Mr. Jones, the proud principal of Marion Technical Institute, held an orientation for all students on Friday, August the 9th. This was, again, an amazing opportunity to begin meeting with the families and building relationships with the students and their parents. The current enrollment at MTI is 494 students, and this includes all work-study students, students in the Success Academy, which is the ESE Students Receiving Continuum of Learning. It includes the elementary pass site students and the students in the six district pass sites. Out of the 494, 66 are work-study, five are in the Success Academy, 17 are at district pass sites, and 18 are at the two elementary pass sites. MTI continues to receive new students every day, and we have not yet seen all 495 students yet, and so calls have been initiated to begin reaching out to the students that we have not seen, to identify where they are, and if they're still in our area, we're encouraging them to attend Marion MTI. All positions on the staffing plan for MTI have been posted, and there are several people in the hiring process as of today. MTI has also received all the additional furniture needed and Chromebooks so that the students can access their curriculum. They have all been scheduled and enrolled in Edge Annuity based on their credit needs. The ESE Department has already reviewed the enrolled students and compiled a list of all of the IEP services, including counseling services needed. And the social worker has been assigned to alternative learning. She also worked with many of these students the past several years, and so she's been on campus and been able to help facilitate and getting to know our kids and building those relationships. The team is working also with mental health and wellness to ensure that all students receive their wraparound services, which includes the counseling, mentoring, and behavior interventions. And a contract is actually coming before the Board for their review and hopeful approval. The contract is for a conflict resolution curriculum. It's for grades K-12, and it can be used as a Tier 2 or Tier 3 behavior intervention. It will be for all schools, but kits have also been designated to be purchased for MTI and the pass sites as well. We've also added a behavior specialist and a behavior tech to the staffing plan to support the students here at MTI. And I think, in summary, the past three school days have been a really great, great start. Yesterday, Mr. Jones had assemblies with all the students, setting those goals and expectations, and then he also met individually with the seniors as well to help encourage and motivate them to work towards their high school diploma. So, we are very excited about the future of the school year, and we look forward to the work.
Thank you, Dr. Hembrook. And I also want to thank Mr. Jones, who is behind you. Yeah, there he is. I knew he came in. So, thank Mr. Jones also for his leadership and all of the things he's done to be very proactive and positive and engaging with our students. Thank you. You have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, comments, feedback from the Board? Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hembrook, because I just asked for that Tuesday night. So, I appreciate you gathering information. And, Mr. Jones, I'm just extremely grateful that, I mean, that you got an orientation put together for Friday, when all of this is just going. So, thank you so much. I know that's just hours and hours of work on your part and your commitment to your students. So, thank you. Dr. Hembrook, could you review, because I couldn't write fast enough, the numbers for each site? So, you said 495 total, and then could you do that breakdown again for me?
Sure. Out of the 494, 66 are work-study students, five are in the Success Academy, 17 are at our six district pass sites, and 18 are at the two elementary pass sites. Do you happen to have a breakdown for how many from each of the pass sites? I do.
That'd be great. And would it be easier for you to send that to me, or do you mind sharing it?
You can go ahead and share, Dr. Hembrook, and then we can also follow up, Board, in writing, just remember that those numbers...
Well, are flexible.
Change.
Yes, they are fluid. So, as of yesterday, I'll give you yesterday's total. Westport High School had four students. Dunellen High School had five. Howard Middle School had two. Forest High School had three. North Marion had one, and Lake Weir had two. Do you want the elementary broken down as well?
I'd as well.
Okay. The Hammont Bowen Site, the elementary pass site, had five, and then the elementary pass site here had 13.
Great. All right. Thank you very much. Also, can you share with me what the SRO situation is for on campus, what the schedule for that is?
Yes, absolutely. We have two SROs, and they have staggered timeframes. One is 8 to 5, and one is 9 to 4.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Sorry. 8 to 4 and 9 to 5.
Working 9 to 5.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Hembrook.
Any other feedback, comments from the Board?
No. Those pass numbers are positive. So, my only question is, after leaving, and if I missed it, I'm sorry, are we, did we set a number for the amount of seats we're going to reserve for schools to use as pass as an alternative to OSS?
So, it's definitely fluid, but Dr. Brewer and I talked about setting at least five seats.
At every site?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Board Member Campbell.
Sure. Thank you so much for, I know, first day car line was, oh, excuse me, first day bus loop was interesting, but I'm sure a lot of that is being resolved and worked out. So, I'm just grateful for the work that the team is putting in and all hands on deck and making sure that this happens. The high school principals that I've spoken to that have pass sites are also positive that this is going to work, and so they didn't have any concerns that I heard from them either. So, I think that that's also positive. While we may feel trepidation or concern or what have you, if they're not concerned, I'm not concerned. So, that's just kudos to the team, and that speaks well to, even if a plan comes together quickly, it's still a plan, and it's still going to be successful. So, thank you.
And if I may brag on Mr. Jones and his team, for Tuesday's bus dismissal, he dismissed 20, he loaded and dismissed 20 buses in 20 minutes.
Woo-hoo! Great job. I should have been back on day two.
If you haven't done bus duty, you really don't know what that accomplishment is.
Right. Woo-hoo! Great job. I should have been back on day two. I'll come watch it again.
And, Madam Chair, good morning.
Yes.
I do want to commend Mr. Jones and the entire staff here at MTI that have been working with him. We know that this came about very abruptly, and he had to pivot real fast, and I appreciate the job that he and his team have done in getting this done and in getting this taken care of to make sure that these kids had somewhere to go. I think we're going to be off to a good start. I just want to make sure that whatever Mr. Jones needs as support, that he gets it, because he was thrown behind the eight ball on this one. So, we need to make sure that he gets it.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Yes, you know, we heard that this was a possibility, and, you know, the negotiations were what they were, and when negotiations break down at the last minute, we still have kids to serve. They're still our kids, no matter where they are, and that's what I've shared with so many parents. You know, "Well, what's changing?" they ask. And I said, "What I see changing is a lot of things for the better." But initially, program location, that's really all that was changing, because we're committed to serving these kids no matter where they are. And having spent some time through the years, especially at New Leaf and also a little at Sermy, and then being around the last couple of days here, I have to say, I need to just remark on the significant positive difference in the atmosphere. The kids, so much calmer. This particular population of students are almost always going to meet your greeting with some form of defensive resistance, if you get a response at all. But in having a one, two, three-minute conversation, it was just remarkable to me how quickly the kids shifted. And to me, that means the seeds are already being sown, and they see it, that they are in a place that is calm, safe, welcoming, and has high expectations with high levels of communication and support. So, I'm thrilled with the way this has gone. I tried to reach out to our ESE Director, Ms. Williams Jones, to connect with her yesterday. Where was she? She was with kids in the gym, you know, having a chance to get a little basketball game in before they got on the bus. That's what I'm talking about. So, thrilled to know about the conflict resolution curriculum. You know, I've enjoyed looking into that kind of stuff, and the fact that it covers K-12 is good. None of that is cheap, but I bet it's a really good curriculum and one that'll be well-implemented with fidelity. I love, you know, the deep support that we're adding. You know, that's why we're doing this, right? And having a behavior specialist dedicated, having a behavior tech dedicated, you know, these are relationship kids, all kids are, but these kids take it to another level. So, it's great. What a great, great start. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have one more thing to say, too, in regards to this. I love this idea of them coming back to a Marion County public school site. The reason I say that is because once we had, once those kids were at an alternative place, Sermy or New Leaf, whatever, the appearance is that they've been exiled. Now, they're back on a Marion County public school site, and it seems like they're being reintegrated back into the school system. So, it helps them mentally, socially, and everything. So, that's a great part of this, coming back to this campus. So, thank you.
I'll just, I want to add one thing. I believe that we're going to get to a place, and we've talked about this before, where we have a program where kids don't want to leave, and they don't want to go back to their base school, which I think just creates another opportunity for us to expand our offerings and meet kids where they are, because who doesn't want to play basketball before the bus shows up, right? And so, I'm grateful that this, I know that Mr. Jones was put here as the AP, what, two or three years ago, under Mr. Smallridge for an exact reason, and it was a part of the purpose so that in this moment, he would be here to step into this role and be the perfect person to lead this program. So, I couldn't be happier.
Madam Chair, may I, I don't want to put you, Dr. Hembrook, or Mr. Jones on the spot, but I know we didn't get deeply into the partnerships that are being planned, too, to support the students. I don't know if you want to add now or just share later, because I know there are some things underway with partnerships in the community to help our students be successful as well.
I'll let Mr. Jones speak to that. I know he's still in the development stage.
Right. And that's why I said we could follow up later, but I know there's some really exciting partnerships.
Just give us a couple tidbits.
I really set you up, didn't I? I'm so sorry.
If they're not solidified, you don't have to speak out of turn.
You could talk broadly about it. I just know that you have them.
Yeah, right.
Well, a couple partnerships that I do want to go ahead and mention that we've already started establishing is one with the mayor. We had a conference this summer with the mayor, and some representatives from the district, including the hospital district, sit down at the table, trying to come up with solutions on how the city can help our students. And then, Sermy had a big partnership that, with a community member, and after the board member, I'm sorry, the board meeting, the community member met me outside, and he's all on board. So, we have individuals in the community that have stepped up and are reaching out, and we're going to have a successful wraparound services that offer different avenues for different students.
Fantastic. Bringing it all together.
Yes. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope. I just, the next, I know we didn't say it was a pep rally, but the next rally, I hope you'll invite us so we can, we can celebrate with you. I love that you started the school year off that way. And really, Mr. Jones, it's just amazing that you got, you have got so much accomplished in two weeks.
Yes.
It's really unbelievable. So, just thank you again to everyone that had their hands in getting this up and going so quickly.
And Chair, I just, I wanted to say, I'm sitting here saying, obviously, super grateful for the team and all the hard work, but I also want to say, I'm grateful for this team because this Board and this administration, this superintendent got this done. And this is something that has been needed to be done. I know I've talked about it for several years, several of us have, and so here we are, and I think that this is the start of something amazing that we're all going to look back on and be grateful for.
Well, I agree. You know, great leaders and great leadership teams recognize the lightning in a bottle moment, and they go for it. And here we are. So, pretty great stuff. What a great way to start this work session. I can't wait to talk about the budget.
Almost. Thank you, Dr. Hembrook. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you. Thank you both. Now, we will switch to legislative updates, priorities, Board, that you have set, and Mr. Carlisle is here to provide an update of the items that you discussed previously and some next steps. Thank you.
Can't wait to talk about this, too. Yes.
Good morning, Board Chair, Thrower, School Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Gullett. Just to take you back, at our June 20th workshop, you guys began the discussion of legislative priorities with several potential priorities. Then, on the July 11th work session, we, you narrowed those down to five. Those five legislative priorities, plus any additional follow-up, were emailed to you all yesterday morning. After our July 11th work session, an additional potential priority was discussed surrounding mental health. Worked with the Mental Health and Wellness Department to draft a potential legislative priority for that, and that was also included via email to you all yesterday morning. Look forward to answering or assisting with any questions or follow-up that I can on this potential legislative priority.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Do you want to start us off, Board Member Campbell?
Sure. So, I certainly appreciate it, and appreciate the work that the team put in to give us this information. When I read it, and I probably should have called you yesterday after I read it, but whenever I read it, it made me question what our current per-people funding is. And so, in the categorical that we have for mental health, I believe in our conversation with Representative Chamberlain, it was potentially that there's a separate bucket of funding. So, in my question, and it may not be that we come to a resolution today, I don't know if we need to increase a categorical or if we need to have something completely separate that says mental health counselors per this number of students, or if we're specifically wanting mental health counselors that, out of some other allocation of funding potentially, that each school district can employ X number of mental health counselors based on, so that's my only question about making it tied to a categorical. So, I don't know. I welcome your thoughts, Board, but I am questioning that specifically because in a recent conversation we had, we even talked about, and I have it typed here, this was in our budget meeting last week, potentially putting in something about deregulation, that when a categorical is collapsed, that we ask that the reporting requirements be removed for that former categorical. So, a couple of our other priorities are specifically tied to increasing funding in a categorical, Safe Schools being one, and then Gifted Education, you know, those are things we'd like. So, that's my only question about this. I do believe that specifically allocating resources for mental health counselors for schools and/or school districts is imperative. I just wonder how it couldn't be worded potentially differently if we don't want to tie it to categorical, but I welcome your thoughts, Board.
If I may, I did work with Ms. Del Nardo on that. I asked her about that. Out of our current mental health allocation, we do fund, she said, 12 mental health counselors that are assigned at particular schools to provide these services to our students. And when we discuss this, obviously, she recognizes the growing need. So, adding this figure to that allocation would assist with hiring even more mental health counselors to spread across our schools.
Okay. Perfect. So, I mean, potentially, again, it is going to have to be tied to a funding source, but potentially, we could even, again, say X number of mental health counselors per number of students or something like that, because when we think about legislative priorities, while we certainly want to impact Marion County, we also have to think globally and think every district in the state is going to be receiving whatever this is. So, we have to think of how to tie it, categoricals work, but tie it so that it relates...
Globally.
It fits every school district.
If I may, Madam Chair, I'd like, if I could, I'd jump into that. I would absolutely support that, and I was just going to comment that indeed, all of my colleagues that I've heard from around the state when we have our meetings and even a recent board meeting, superintendent group, everybody is struggling with this. So, the more teeth we can get in helping to support all districts, I think, is better, and the state will understand that this is a need.
Not just us.
Not just us. So, by the number of students, perhaps, might be a possible way to do that.
Right. And part of the challenge, again, when you're thinking of a global, is salaries are going to vary in Marion County than they are in Miami-Dade for mental health counselors. So, we also have to think a little bit about how that looks. We certainly don't want a mandate coming down that you have to have a certain number of mental health counselors per students. That's not what we're looking for. We're wanting to make sure that there's funding tied to those mental health counselors that we need. So, I, but again, I don't know if it necessarily needs to be a categorical, more or less, and perhaps out of the money that we receive in mental health, and this may be Ms. Boston Ellis' question, that all the mental health money that we receive only funds these 12 mental health counselors, or is it also funding some curriculum resources and other things? Okay. Okay. So, that was my thought. So, then, I think it would be better if we came up with a more broad number as to, kind of like we did when we were talking school staffing plans, how many guidance, how many students really, a range, how many students really could be served by one guidance counselor or, excuse me, school counselor, if they don't count guidance counselor anymore, something like that, to say, you know, based on a school district of 45,000, we would like funding, you know, to at least have 20 mental health coun, whatever that number is, and so we can get a little tighter on what we're actually asking on a per-student ratio, and then, you know, at the funding, what that potentially would be. I don't know.
Those numbers are usually based on the umbrella organization's recommendation, and something that I was thinking about is, do we want to be tied to the actual term "mental health counselor," or would something a little, maybe along the lines of "mental health service provider," because each district may be delivering services differently by a different type of mental health service provider. That could be a psychologist, they may need more of those for some reason, it could be a social worker, it could be a, you know, I think you get my point. So, if there is an umbrella organization that isn't specified to school counselors or school social workers, kind of an overarching umbrella organization, maybe we could use that as our guide to try to go for, depending on the size of the district, how many per district, and that would be where the funding would go, something along those lines.
Yeah. If I may, I think that's an important distinction, because when I was working with the Mental Health and Wellness Department, they were very clear that it's not just mental health counselors that are providing this. This is our school psychologists, our social workers. So, I think that's an important distinction, that these services are provided by a large team, and they're...
Yep. Any other input, feedback? Are...
Trying to come up with solutions on how the city can help our students. And then there certainly had a big partnership that, that was a community member. And after the board member, I'm sorry, the board meeting, the community member met me outside and he's all on board. So we have individuals in the community that have stepped up and are reaching out. And we're going to have a successful wraparound services that offer different avenues for different students.
Fantastic. Bringing it all together.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else?
No. I just, the next, I know we didn't say it was a pep rally, but the next rally, I hope you'll invite us so we can, we can celebrate with you. I love that you started the school year off that way. And really, Mr. Jones, it's just amazing that you got, you have got so much accomplished.
Yes.
In two weeks. It's really unbelievable. So just thank you again to everyone that had their hands in getting this up and going so quickly.
And Chair, I just, I wanted to say, I'm, I'm sitting here saying, obviously, super grateful for the team and all the hard work. But I also want to say, I'm grateful for this team because this board and this administration, this superintendent got this done. And this is something that has been needed to be done. I know I've talked about it for several years, several of us have. And so here we are. And I think that this is the start of something amazing that we're all going to look back on and be grateful for.
Well, I agree. You know, great, great leaders and great leadership teams recognize the lightning in a bottle moment. And they go for it. And here we are. So, pretty great stuff. What a great way to start this work session. I can't wait to talk about the budget.
Almost. Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you. Thank you both. Now we will switch to legislative updates, priorities board that you have set. And Mr. Carlisle is here to provide an update of the items that, that you discussed previously and, and some next steps. Thank you.
Can't wait to talk about this too.
Good morning, Board Chair, Thrower, School Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Gullett. Just to take you back, at our June 20th workshop, you guys began the discussion of legislative priorities with several potential priorities. Then on the July 11th work session, we, you narrowed those down to five. Those five legislative priorities, plus any additional follow-up, were emailed to you all yesterday morning. After our July 11th work session, an additional potential priority was discussed surrounding mental health. Worked with the Mental Health and Wellness Department to draft a potential legislative priority for that. And that was also included via email to you all yesterday morning. Look forward to answering or assisting with any questions or follow-up that I can on this potential legislative priority.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Do you want to start us off, Board Member Campbell?
Sure. So I certainly appreciate it and appreciate the work that the team put in to give us this information. When I read it, and I probably should have called you yesterday after I read it. But whenever I read it, it made me question what our current per people funding is. And so in the categorical that we have for mental health, I believe in our conversation with Representative Chamberlain, it was potentially that there's a separate bucket of funding. So in my question, and it may not be that we come to a resolution today, I don't know if we need to increase a categorical, or if we need to have something completely separate that says, "Mental health counselors per this number of students." Or, or if, if we're specifically wanting mental health counselors that, out of some other allocation of funding potentially, that each school district can employ X number of mental health counselors based on. So that's my only question about making it tied to a categorical. So I, I don't know. I welcome your thoughts, Board, but I, I'm, I am questioning that specifically because in a recent conversation we had, we even talked about, and I have it typed here, this was in our budget meeting last week, potentially putting in something about deregulation, that when a categorical is collapsed, that we ask that the reporting requirements be removed for that former categorical. So a couple of our other priorities are specifically tied to increase in funding in a categorical, safe schools being one. And then gifted education, you know, those, those are things we'd like. So I, that's my only question about this. I, I do believe that specifically allocating resources for mental health counselors for schools and/or school districts is imperative. I just wonder how it couldn't be worded potentially differently if, if we don't want to tie it to categorical. But I welcome your thoughts, Board.
If I may, I did work with Ms. Del Nardo on that. I asked her about that. Out of our current mental health allocation, we do fund, she said, 12 mental health counselors that are assigned particular schools to provide these services to our students. And when we, when we discuss this, obviously, she recognizes the growing need. So adding this figure to that allocation would assist with hiring even more mental health counselors to, to spread across our schools.
Okay. Perfect. So I mean, potentially, again, it is going to be, have to be tied to a funding source. But potentially, we could even, again, say, X number of mental health counselors per number of students, or something like that. Because when we think about legislative priorities, while we certainly want to impact Marion County, we also have to think globally and think every district in the state is going to be receiving whatever this is. So we have to think of how to tie it, categoricals work, but tie it so that it relates.
Globally.
It fit, it fits every school district.
If I may, Madam Chair, I'd like, if I could, I'd jump into that. I would absolutely support that. And, and I was just going to comment that indeed, all of my colleagues that I've heard from around the state when we have our meetings, and even a recent board meeting superintendent group, everybody is struggling with this. So the more teeth we can get in helping to support all districts, I think, is better. And the state will understand that this is a need.
Not just us.
Not just us. So by the number of students perhaps might be a possible way to do that.
Right. And part of the challenge, again, when you're thinking of a global, is salaries are going to vary in Marion County than they are in Miami-Dade for mental health counselors. So we also have to think a little bit about how that looks. We certainly don't want a mandate coming down that you have to have a certain number of mental health counselors per students. That's not what we're looking for. We're wanting to make sure that there's funding tied to those mental health counselors that we need. So I, but again, I don't know if it necessarily needs to be a categorical, more, more or less. And perhaps out of the money that we receive in mental health, and this may be Ms. Boston Ellis's question, that all the mental health money that we receive only funds these 12 mental health counselors? Or is it also funding some curriculum resources and other things? Okay. Okay. So that, that was my thought. So then I, I think it would be better if we came up with a more broad number as to, kind of like we did when we were talking school staffing plans, how many guidance, how many students really arrange? How many students really could be served by one guidance counselor, or excuse me, school counselor, if they don't call guidance counselor anymore? Something like that to say, you know, based on a school district of 45,000, we would like funding, you know, to, to at least have 20 mental health coun, whatever that number is. And so we can get a little tighter on what we're actually asking on a per student ratio. And then, you know, at the funding, what that potentially would be. I don't know.
Those numbers are usually based on the umbrella organization's recommendation. And something that I was thinking about is, do we want to be tied to the actual term, mental health counselor? Or would something a little, maybe along the lines of mental health service provider? Because each district may be delivering services differently by a different type of mental health service provider. That could be a psychologist. They may need more of those for some reason. It could be a social worker. It could be a, you know, I think you get my point. So if there is an umbrella organization that isn't specified to school counselors or school social workers, kind of an overarching umbrella organization, maybe we could use that as our guide to try to go for, depending on the size of the district, how many per district. And that would be where the funding would go. Something along those lines.
Yeah. If I may, I think that's an important distinction. Because when I was working with the Mental Health and Wellness Department, they, they were very clear that it's not just mental health counselors that are providing this. This is our school psychologists, our social workers. So I think that's an important distinction. That these services are provided by, by a, a large team.
Yep. Any other input feedback? All right.
Sure. Just, however, and potentially, as we're developing this, it might even take us talking to our legislators again and, and having conversation. Because I foresee potentially a bill that is an overarching mental health bill that talks about how we're going to find more mental health counselors and how we're going to have scholarships or transitions, and, and how even our, our new student program at the, at Bellevue High School, where we're going to be starting to give students an opportunity to, to have behavioral and mental health service learning, that, that they'll be able to, to get certifications and things. So I, I almost see, I'm, I'm kind of thinking broadly on how this bill would be put together that it, and, and then obviously would have funding tied to it.
You know, that, before I lose my thought, that is a great idea. Because we are very focused on career and technical education. We have two sitting student representative board members that are both very interested in the mental health services field. We hear this all the time. So that is just another potential pipeline and pathway for a career and technical education for us to establish and for the state to fund.
So perhaps that's the angle we take. So I mean, think about it, like, what, what does that look like from a curriculum standpoint? This certainly is the need, and, and we know that directly. But how do we think about it more from an education standpoint? What do we need to further advance those opportunities for students to get into the field? And so maybe, maybe it's a little broader perhaps than what we have here. Dr. Gullett, I don't.
Yes, I'm, I'm thinking as well, Board. I like the idea, the certification route for students. You could also consider a pipeline for staff to get certified. So imagine teachers and other staff that have additional certifications and have it be paid for, and maybe incentivized, could help all of our students in all the work that they're doing.
Right. So I, I would love to see us be the champion for this language. Whatever we can come up with and, and think about what that looks like, that we can then get partner legislators to carry this on for us. And I believe we have some that absolutely would. But if we get that, let's massage it a little bit more, and then maybe bring it back to us. Do we have a work session next Thursday, too? I feel like we haven't ever.
Probably.
Probably, probably. So if we could.
Next one is August 22nd.
Okay, perfect. So that is next week. So potentially.
Actually, I don't know that we're going to have that one. It depends on how far we go today. So.
Okay.
But the next one would be September 5th, which gives a little more time.
Sure.
Because what I feel like I'm hearing is, there's a couple of pieces of this now. You know, we need some direct funding to find any mental health service providers we can and hire them. But we also now are looking at incorporating a career and technical education pathway, pipeline piece, and also certification opportunities to be paid for because the need is urgent.
Yes. Okay. Does that help? Do you have enough direction, I guess, from us to see what we're looking for?
And if not, you have till September 5th to ask us. And we can provide input.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, yeah, because that's just next week, so.
Absolutely. And thank you, Chair. It, it does help us, it does help for us to have this thought-provoking conversation. So that way, great ideas come out of conversation. So I, I think that it, it'll take it further than what we had here. Because ultimately, the state challenge is, we have the need, we don't have the people. And so we, as education, need to be a part of that. And how we can even make partnerships with state colleges. And, you know, I, I see it being an overarching concept, but out of it, also helping us with the immediate need of additional mental health service providers in our schools. So.
And the interest is there. You know, we have kids, a lot of kids saying that they notice the mental health needs of, of themselves and their friends. So that's just awesome. It makes, for another relevant reason, to come to school. If, if you're feeling that this is something that is really important to you, you're going to come to school every day because you're interested and you want to learn more about it and you want to become it. So that's great. All right. Great conversation.
All right.
Anything else you need from us?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Back again on September 5th.
All right. Sounds like a plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. That concludes my briefing. If you're ready to move on, Madam Chair?
We sure are.
All right. Very good. So now we will transition to the budget. And welcome back, Ms. Boston Ellis and her team for more discussion of the specific aspects of the budget for this year. Thank you so much.
Good morning, Chair, Thrower, Board Members, Superintendent Gullett. We are excited to be back for part two, what we consider as part two of the budgeting process, tentative budget. What we're going to do, if it's okay with you, is we'll review and then discuss the questions or comments that you had from the last work session. And then we'll transition over to discussing the rest of the funds. That will be led by Ms. Kayla Johnson, who is a senior accountant in Finance Department. And she predominantly works with capital and debt service and has provided a lot of guidance for the team as it relates to special revenue fund. So I believe the discussion points from the last work session, or behind tab seven maybe. The first item says tab three, slide 19. And the top says tentative budget presentation.
This one. This one. This one. Yes?
Yes.
It says tab three, slide 19 at the top left. And I'd also like to guide you to the PowerPoint presentation behind tab three, page 19. We were having a discussion about the base student allocation and how the categoricals, several categoricals were rolled into the base student allocation from last year and this year. And the discussion we had about what are those components? And how much are they in terms of what, what part of the base student allocation are they? So we were not provided with any information in terms of how much of the base student allocation for 23, 24 year or 24, 25 year. How much of each one of those numbers belonged to the different categoricals that were rolled into the base student allocation? But what we have provided to you is those items that we have budgeted for, that were previously categoricals. So under the 23, 24 year, you'll see typically these, the allocation for instructional materials, which includes a science lab, ESC apps, instructional materials, media enhancement. Also, the regular textbook allocation. Also, you'll see that the teacher wage allocation, which is that increase in salary for our teachers, as well as the personnel, other personnel increases. The teacher lead, we used to call it teacher lead, and now it's called teacher classroom supplies. And also the F E F P reading. So those were the categoricals that were rolled into the B S A. What we have done in Marion County Public Schools, along with the discussion with our curriculum, is we maintain the allocation from the previous year. So in 22, 23, we have continued to maintain that allocation with the exception of the, the teacher, classroom teacher and other instructional personnel. Because F L D O E, our legislators, provided what that amount should be. Also, for the teacher's supply dollars, they provided what that dollar should be per teacher. But everything else is pretty much carried over from the 22, 23 year. So there is flexibility. We could decrease some of these allocations. But as most of our needs, they probably need more than what we are allocating for these specific programs. Any questions? Okay. We'll move on to slide 45. And while the next schedule of the tab three, slide 45 doesn't directly relate to this, we were having the, the discussion about, for the 24, 25 year, what does that look like in terms of additional operating expenses? So working with Mr. Ayers and also Employment Services, we came up with a quick analysis of what the cost of staff for each one of the new elementary schools would look like. You will notice that we did not include our basic teachers or E S C teachers because it has not been determined whether some of those teachers would be moved over to the two new schools, or if we would have to hire additional students. But there are some basic positions that are needed when you open a new school. And that's what you have in front of you. You'll see, it ranges from our enhancement, I guess what I would call the art, music, P E teachers, the media specialists, counselors, our student service manager, and all the clerical staff that is needed in a school, as well as custodians and groundskeepers. So there are some positions that are not included in this. But we will work through that as we get closer to the student body that's going to move to our two new schools. So just to give you, I guess, give you an idea of what the cost would be. What we estimated is that for Elementary W and X, it would be about $3.1 million. So unless we do something different, change the, how the makeup of each school is, we're looking at additional operating costs of that dollar amount.
Ms. Boston Ellis?
Yes.
I just have one question. It's not a lot of money, but it's still representative of some money. We had spoken at the board about moving art, music and media to referendum.
Right.
And so theoretically, if we did that, then art, music and media from here, which is.
And P E.
And P E. So I mean, it's not a lot, but it's probably half a million dollars when you take those positions times two. So they would, they would not be representative on here if we decided to make that transition, right?
Exactly. And also, we wouldn't just assume that the basic teachers would move to these new schools. We may have to hire additional teachers. But the objective here was just to give you a, a look at what that additional operating costs might be for those schools. But you are absolutely correct.
Okay.
What is also not included on here is other, what I would call other units that would be purchased with, say, Title I dollars.
E S C paras.
Yes.
Those kinds of things.
Yes.
E S L paras.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But this was just to give you a, just a look at the additional operating costs if our student body did not increase anymore. But we know that we are growing, and we will get additional funding. So the next one I'd like to take your attention to is tab three, slide 81. And I believe Dr. Campbell started this discussion, and everyone else chimed in on it. So what is provided to you here is an analysis that Mr. Thomas Dyke created. Currently, currently in class size, in the referendum, we have about $12.8 million worth of class size reduction teachers. For Fund 1,000, or the general fund, the remaining elementary teachers for art, music and P E total $5 million. Middle school art and high school art total $1.6 million. Middle school music and high school music total $1.8 million. Middle school P E teachers and high school P E teachers total $4 million. Elementary media specialists, media school, excuse me, middle school media specialists, high school media specialists total $2.7 million. And then, of course, we discussed the applied tech units for middle, high. And we also threw in the career lab specialist as well. And they totaled $9.2 million. So the total units that are funded in the general fund 1,000 is $24.4 million. So what we did is looked at the total for class size reduction of $12.8 million. And the assumption is that those units would be moved into the general fund. So that would be an add of $12.8 million to the general fund. Then we would look at moving the elementary, middle and high art, music, P E and media from the general fund to, to the referendum. So if we do that, we would have about $12.8 million moving from referendum to the general fund. And we would move $15 million from the general fund to referendum.
That does not include tech units.
It does not. And we're open to discussion. This, this would be a lot of work between the budgeting department and employment services. But we, we can get it done if the expectation is this would be done before the final budget.
Chair, I have a question. Were, do we have $3 million to give on the referendum budget?
Right, yes. Right now, we are projecting to have about eight or nine million at the end of the year in referendum. So it would lower that dollar amount that's going to be available at the end.
But we wouldn't be taking away from the existing plan for safe schools?
No.
Okay. So we have the buffer to, to do this swap and, and then some with referendum funds?
Right. The only thing is, because the tax proceeds don't start coming until about November, there'll be like a little cash flow issue for a month or two.
Okay. Okay. And then my other question is, right now, I just want to make sure I understand this. Right now, applied tech units are being funded out of referendum, and they would.
No.
No.
For the most, most of these units you see here, the 120, they're in the general fund now. We do have 20 applied tech units in the referendum currently.
Okay. So our referendum language does say we're gonna, we are going to use it for.
Vocational.
Vocational. And we are doing that. I just wanted to make sure if we didn't move these over, we were still at least representing some tech units in referendum? Okay. Those were my only questions. I'm on board with the transition, if it's feasible for the team to make it happen this year. If not, I could also be on board with the switch happening for the next fiscal year so that we go pure into the new W and X, and we're just get it all settled. So I can be a team player for either of those options.
Thank you, Board Member James. I agree. It's really important to me personally, and it sounds like it's important to the board too, to really support this department and be strategic about how we make these shifts, when we make these shifts, and what, the timing of which needs to make the most sense to, to your department. And I'm certainly relying on that feedback, rather than saying, well, we want to get it done, you know, this year. Just, that's not the tone I'm hearing from this board. Am I correct?
Agreed. I agree.
Sure. I, my, I'm sorry, I'm just getting these numbers today. So I'm, I'm still processing a bit. So based on what the recommendation is coming forth, it's that all elementary art, music, P E, in addition, all elementary middle and high media specialists, and middle and high art, music and P E teachers as well. Which currently, the referendum doesn't fund any of those middle or high school art, music, P E teachers.
Correct. What, what is provided by the referendum is some additional funding to those programs.
Right.
But not staff.
Sure.
And, and we can do different groupings, but we just felt like this was a discussion you would need to have, and providing you all of this information would help make an informed decision about what you'd like for us to do.
Right. And I believe Dr. James just asked, so what the recommendation again is art, music, PE, and media, and not funding any, out of the referendum, not funding any of our vocational teachers?
There are 20 in there now.
Okay. So, this would be addition as well?
These are, these are the current, current units that are funded by the general fund.
Okay. Okay. I, I think I'm understanding.
I, I think what we had done originally was add the 20 units a few years ago, or was 16, because of the new vocational programs that were coming on.
Right.
So, those teaching units were supporting the new programs. We, we never discussed about moving all vocational to it, but these, these units, and, and of course, equipment, because we know the vocational equipment is very expensive. So, here was an opportunity to purchase the equipment for the new programs.
Right. Right. So, that's, again, I, I said this last Thursday, I believe, those one-time costs. Equipment is more of a, I, I know we have maintenance on equipment, but equipment is more of a one-time cost as opposed to, obviously, we know the recurring costs of the, all of these teachers that we're talking about moving. I, I can move forward with the recommendation. I don't know that I was expecting to put all of the middle school and high school art, music, and PE teachers, though I can understand why we are. So, I, I'll make that blanket statement because currently, the referendum isn't funding them at all. And so, that, just in my thought process, I'm, I wasn't expecting to see them on this chart, but, but that's fine if this is the recommendation that you all have, because potentially, it is cleaner to do it this way than it would be to break it down in, in different ways.
Our objective was to get it, you know, balanced.
Right.
As much as possible. So, that's why I'm saying, this is why it's presented to you like this.
Sure.
So, if, if there is an agreement to do something else, we can make that change. But our objective was to, to, we, we wanted it to be neutral.
Right. And if, what you've done here has gotten it to neutral?
Close.
Well, close, right. I, I mean, and, and we knew this was a heavy lift. I mean, I think whenever we made the ask a week ago, I, I don't, while we asked for it to be this week, I don't know that, you know, fully intending that we would see it. I, I too can be, I'll use the word lenient on whether it's this year or next. I still would lean towards how grateful I would be if we did get it for this upcoming budget year. For the last couple of years, this has been something I've had pondering why the language says one thing, and yet, looking at the numbers, it really hasn't looked like what I would have hoped. And so, I, I can be on board with knowing this is a heavy lift, and if, and if it certainly feels like the department and all the other things, maybe we won't have any more changes to the budget in the next conversation we have from start to finish today, and maybe there will be time that could be allocated for this over the course of the next week to two weeks, or however long we've got. But I, if, if the board is in consensus that it doesn't have to be this year, then I, I can get on board with that. My hope still is that it is this year, though.
All right. Any other feedback from the board? Because I do feel like the department appreciates it when we are able to be direct in our expectations, and I, from my view, I am hearing that this is a priority. However, there is a timeline that if it is achievable sooner than later, great, that's frosting on the cake, but if it is not, and in the myriad of other things that you're doing to, to bring us the good, solid budget that we need to operate for the next year, then carry on. Does that capture it?
It does.
Okay. All right. Is that definite enough for you, Ms. Boston Ellis?
I think so.
[laughing].
So, thank you. Thank you. Again, this is just laying out, you know, the number and the positions, and for discussion and your recommendation to us.
Yes.
Of how you want this to be handled.
And, and I feel comfortable with the, with the direction, you know, that we are going. The timeline for getting there, there's a lot of other moving parts that, that we always need to be mindful of as, as a board, despite our, you know, enthusiasm and, and knowing this is something that we wanted and needed to see. The fact that it's going to happen is the most important thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the very last item...
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Question, so if we don't do it this year, it kind of, all this that you just done changes, correct? Because the numbers are going to change for next budget.
We can't hear you very well, sir.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
She missed all the...
It'll be new numbers.
It'll be new numbers, correct? If we don't do it this year, it's going, all of this that you just did is going to change.
Oh, yes. Just because of the number of staff, the salary and benefits will change, but we would still work toward balancing.
I just hate for all this to go to waste at this year, and then you gotta wait another year, so.
Which would you prefer? Would you prefer, since you've already gotten halfway there, to just finish it and do it this year, or do you want to wait until next year? What does the team prefer to do?
Thomas? Well, really, let's, let's look at it as a recommendation.
Yeah.
You know, because I know you always look for the board preference, you know, what do we want? And you do such a great job of executing that. But what would be your, your recommendation? Because Board Member Cummings does have a good point, you've already put the work in. However, the framework is there, and, and the numbers would just change next year, so...
Right. Well, basically, Thomas has looked at all of these units and calculated the cost of salary and benefits, but as I stated earlier, the heavy lift is payroll department moving people, funding changes, and we've already started the payroll process for this year. So, they would have to do payroll entries, and even before that, the Employment Services Department has now got to change the funding for these individuals. But we talked, and it can be done, and we've done it before on other items, maybe not as large as this, but it can be done. It's up to you.
I, personally, I think since the work has been initiated, I would like to see it go forward, go ahead and get it out the way. I don't like kicking the can down the road.
Okay.
That's me.
We'll operate under that, then.
Thank you.
Ready, ready.
Completely, yeah.
Okay. So, we've, I think we have consensus from the board due to the continued exchange and conversation that, you know, we're ready to, to move forward, and the great work that it's going to take from all the departments to make this happen in the short term will hopefully be a better benefit to all of us in the long term.
Well said. Thank you.
Let's go.
So, the, so the last item that I have, I believe Dr. Campbell wanted some information based on the changes in fund balance and a looking back at a, in a 10-year. And Kayla and I talked a lot about this yesterday of how to present it to you in a manner that makes sense. So, we, she actually put together these two slides, and the first one is the change in unassigned fund balance. So, you all know that in fund balance, we're required to reserve. There's a requirement to reserve if it is inventory or things that are prepaid. We're required to reserve categoricals, and we've been talking a lot about that. So, if we don't spend all those dollars, we have to rebudget them. So, sometimes, looking at fund balance is, is a little misleading to just the regular reader. But the first schedule that she prepared is the change in the unassigned fund balance. And you'll see on 2014, 15, at the original adopted budget, it was 4%. At the end of the year, it was 6%. So, it grew 2% from the beginning of the year to the end. And you'll see all of these years, and the, the only one that I would point out to you is since COVID, you might recall that a lot of expenditures that would normally have been paid out of general fund were moved to the S R funding so that we could build up our fund balance to be ready for when that funding cliff came to, to assist us. So, on the second slide that she prepared, this looks at all the different components of fund balance. So, we have, the first small column is the adopted budget, and the second column is where we actually ended up in that year. So, this gives you a picture of all the different pieces of our fund balance, and it shows you what's reserved, it shows you what is required, they call it spendable, what also, what we have also set aside for different items. You might recall that for a few years, we were saving money so that we could go to self-funded. And so, that was in the fund balance as well until we went to self-funding. But I think what, and I may not be speaking for you correctly, Dr. Campbell, but I think you were looking for that first slide where we have the most flexibility. And included in that is the 3% that is required by our legislators. Is that close to what you were asking for?
Yes. Thank you so much. This is actually exactly what I was looking for from a couple of different fronts, not just what, where we ended, but also where we began. I did want to see the historical, the last 10 years of school boards where the board has landed on approving a budget that included, back in 2014, 15, 4% to be our budgeted unassigned, or, excuse me, our budgeted fund balance, and then where we landed compared to the last couple of years where 7%, you know, that, I wanted to see what the sweet spot had been for Marion County, and certainly, 4% was a little low. It's pretty scary those years. But then, we got into that 6% to 7% range, and so, and then, obviously, the, the one year was even higher than that. But, so, based on this, the 2023, 2024 year, we had budgeted to be at 5% fund balance and ended much higher than that, as we know. So, I was trying to flip through my pages really quickly. I have numbers here for what we're expecting fund balance, but the percentage again, if you could remind me what the 24, 25% that we're, I was trying to flip through my pages. And again, I know the recommended, and auditors recommend 5% to 7%, and that we're required to have 3%, but do we have a percent on what our fund balance will be this year?
Yes. It should be on that pie chart. That was the attachment that we get there.
Like 44, maybe, or...
49?
Okay. Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get my hands on the right one.
And that's, that's not a percentage, though. But, do we have the pie chart?
And if you don't have it, I mean, that's a, but that's kind of what I was, I, I feel like we did talk about it last week with a percentage, and I, I just can't remember.
So, the overall would be 8.17% that we are projecting for 24, 25, but our unassigned, we're projecting that to be 5.71%. And that would be on your Tab 3, Slide 49, and it was one of the attachments, so it, it might be behind 6.
Okay. Like, I felt like I saw it. I just didn't remember.
Yeah. It's a pie chart.
Okay.
When we do bar graphs, it, it doesn't really...
Okay. So, if we were to put 24, 25 on this historical fund balance chart, the dark blue column would be at 5.71%, and that, correct, I'm, sorry, I'm just trying to make sure I'm looking at...
Yes. Well, if you're looking at the assigned/unassigned, that instead of 5 for the 23, 24%, it would be 6.14.
Okay. Okay. I think I see what I'm looking for.
Unassigned.
All right. So, again, if last year's budgeted, adopted budget was at 8%, we're looking at 8.17% again, and then, that doesn't feel right. Hang on. I'm just trying to make sure I'm, I'm just adding our next column in each of these.
Oh, so, for, if you're looking at the assigned/unassigned, that was the first bar graph that you got. That, the 24, 25, the blue bar, bar graph would be a total of 6.14%.
Okay.
And where we're going to end, we don't know.
Of course.
Yes.
Okay. So, we are budgeting a little higher than last year, but still less than the year before?
Yes.
That's, that helps me immensely. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Want to make sense because of the S R.
Absolutely. No, and, and it does, we understand that the COVID relief funds certainly altered this a bit, but perhaps in future years, this chart can be included now that you've got, done the work on it, so then you just add the column every year. So, previous boards can see, or, excuse, future boards, excuse me, can see what previous boards have been working with in budgeting, because we, we have a lot of historical information in this, and it's helpful to see, and so, this is just an added piece to that. So, thank you very much. I know this took a little bit of time to work on, and, but this is exactly what I was looking for. Appreciate that. Very good.
So, with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Kayla Johnson to present the remaining funds.
Okay. Good morning.
Morning, morning.
I have the afternoon now. Oh, sure. So, I'm going to go ahead and get started right into the presentation. You guys, I don't know if you want to stop for questions, or there is some natural pauses in the presentation after each section. So, just as a reminder, today, we're looking all, at all of the other funds. This is going to include all of our special revenue funds, debt service, capital, and our internal service funds. The total for this year is about $701 million, and that's about 53% of the entire budget. So, it's going to be the dark blue section of this, this slide here. So, we're going to start by looking at the capital millage levies. We did talk about this some in the general fund presentation, but the tax...
Can I interrupt, Madam Chair? Could you lean into the microphone? It may not, you can't tell down here, there, but up here, it starts...
Is this better?
Yes.
So much better.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Like there? Okay. So, the taxable value, and we did look at this last week, but there was an increase of about 12% in the taxable value for this year, and the total is $38 billion. So, for capital, we're allowed to levy 1.5 mils on that number, and that is set by the legislation, and that hasn't changed. So, you can see that last year, we were allowed to levy 1.5 mils, and that has not changed from current year. However, because of the increase in the property values, there is an increase in the revenue that we're expected to receive in the capital projects fund. Last year, we were expected to get 50.1 million, and this year, we're expecting $56 million. That's an increase of about $5.9 million to be used in the capital projects fund. This is just some historical data for you guys. If you remember, in 2007, 2008, the capital projects fund was allowed to levy... the capital projects fund was allowed to levy 2.0 mils and it was reduced to 1.5 mils. And this chart shows historically the difference of how much money we have lost out on by that reduction in .5 mils since 2008, 2009. So we've missed out on about $170 million since they have reduced that allowed levy. So we'll move in to the capital projects fund budget. So this year, we're budgeting a total revenue of $444 million. About 82% of that is the beginning fund balance. And that does look like a big number, but that includes the certificates of participation, so the construction of the new schools and wings, as well as the revenues from millage that we have not finished on other projects. So the mils for the current year make up about 13% of the revenue. The CONDS funds is less than 1%. Less than 1% is the PICO charter school funds. Other capital projects funds, this is actually grant revenue specific for capital projects, remodeling and renovation. We also have included impact fees this year and they make up about 13, I'm sorry, 3% of the total revenue. We've budgeted $440 million in expenditures for capital projects funds and that is about 81% of new construction, almost 10% of remodeling and renovation. So that makes up almost 90% of the entire capital project fund budget. Some small dollar amounts for improvements, maintenance, property insurance. The debt portion did increase significantly this year because we will start paying the debt service on the certificates of participation that we issued. Buses and vehicles are less than 1%. The charter school PICO funds is less than 1% and less than 1% for equipment.
Yes, we have one question.
It's not a question, it's just a statement. Thank you for showing what this looks like on these pie charts and showing that the impact fees are going to generate almost 3.5%. If you look back on the previous chart, it's not quite the same, but it's almost as if we restored to 2.0 mils. Impact fees are going to have that much significance of an impact on our capital that certainly if it had gone to 2.0 mils, it would have been $18 million, but the impact fees alone are going to restore 15 million of that. And so, just looking at those numbers, it, it's close, it's close to us going back to 2.0 mils without actually doing that. Okay, thank you, sorry, that's just a comment.
Three million left to find.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just have a quick question. The, the impact fee number is a projection, right?
Yes, that was provided to us based on the rates that you were set in the impact fee resolution and the planning and government development department, they are the ones that provided us that number.
So they just provided a projection of the amount of permits they think will get pulled in the fiscal year? Okay. I was just wondering, because I did like the rough math of like 3,600 or whatever that we, that average number was times 4,000 and it was 14 million. So it was close, that's what I figured you guys did.
Yes, so.
Well, will we be able to do a more accurate look back to project next fiscal year?
I think when we start getting impact fees, they might have a better idea, be able to project. When we get to the impact fee section, you guys will see there is quite a few different rates that can be charged based on the type of home. So us trying to project that with not really a base, I think we tried to go conservative, but also with, using reasonable expectations.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, this next slide just shows you all the funding sources that we have for the capital projects fund. The first one is the CONDS and that is from the motor vehicle license fees. We get a small amount every year, it's always about 1.5 million. So you can see that we have a beginning fund balance of 1.3 million and then are expecting 1.5 million this year. Local property taxes, the 1.5 mils, beginning fund balance 41 million and then expected revenue of 56 million. The PICO charter school money, this is just a pass-through for us. The state gives us the money and we transfer it to the general fund and then straight over to the charter schools. PICO maintenance, we haven't gotten PICO maintenance in several years since actually 1819. So there is no funds budgeted or expected to be received this year. Impact fees, you can see we have that little bit of interest remaining of 10,000 and then the 15 million that we're expecting for this year. Sales tax, this is the prior year, the prior sales tax. We have in fund balance 4.9 million. That is reserved for those projects that are in the prior sales tax resolution. The lease purchase agreement, this is a straggling dollar from the 2014 bus lease. So that is to be cleared up. The other capital projects fund, like I said before, is the grant money that we get specifically for remodeling and renovation. And then the last line is going to be the certificates of participation that we issued in 23, 24. So we're, have a budgeted expenditures of 440 million in the capital projects fund. And of course, we'll update the ending fund balance numbers when we have actuals for fiscal year 23, 24.
Chair, I just have one quick question. For the sales tax item, do we have a plan for how we're going to use that money to close the gap? I know that the certificate of participation is showing a gap of $3.4 million. And I believe the, the sales tax, if I'm correct, was, the language was specific to a similar area to where we're addressing the certificate of participation? So is it possible that that sales tax revenue could be used to close that gap for what the certificate of participation is needing?
That's a great question. So the negative amount you're seeing on the certificates of participation right now is just a timing issue from closing 23, 24 to rebudgeting 24, 25. So once we get to final budget, there won't be a change in fund balance there. The sales tax, because it is written for some of those same schools, we could use it for those same items. But the certificates of participation, it's really important that we use those funds first and then fill in the gaps because the sales tax money, we don't have a time limit on. But if you guys recall, we have to use the certificates of participation within three years. So we need to have significant completion on those projects. And then, once we have fully utilized all that money, we can look at using the sales tax to fill in any gaps we have.
Is it possible for the board to get briefed or updated on what that language of the sales tax was, just at your leisure, not today, but?
We do have a small, just a general in the presentation today, but if you need the actual sales tax resolution, we can grab that from the.
Well, I ask just because there are needs beyond what obviously our certificate of participation is addressing. And so if staff feels like the certificate of participation is going to come close to doing what we need it to do, I want to see us, as a board member, I want to see us address other needs because we have them. There are other schools that have needs that aren't being addressed in what we've chosen to prioritize with the, with the certificate of participation. And I, I would like to use this $5 million to meet a need at a school, if that's possible. So we can address, address that at a different time, but that is definitely a priority as a board member for me.
Thank you. So what we know for sure is that 4.9 million can be used for the replacement of Lake Weir Middle School. Because middle school DD was the replacement for Lake Weir Middle School that we are currently using certificate of participation funds for. So if we're talking sales tax to that, we know for sure we can use that money for that and that alone, really, based on how that language was written, potentially for an elementary school as well. But I'm not certain if the exact location where the sales tax was saying that elementary school potentially was going to be and then where we are putting the elementary school. But we know for a fact that the Lake Weir Middle School DD is the sales tax language and we're using certificate of participation funds. I, I agree with what you're saying. I, and I also understand we have to get certificate of participation spent down before we could use those sales tax dollars. But if it looks like we're going to be short anywhere, I would say put all the short side on the Lake Weir project because we know we have 4.9, 4.5 million dollars sitting there that we could use for that right away.
Yes. So I would just love to see at some point what that could balance out to look like so that if it, if we're not going to need it for Lake Weir Middle School and we could use it for something else. I don't know what that something else is, I'd have to look at and find that slide. But I would like to see the money be spent on, we have just so many facility needs. I mean, there are just so many, so.
We do have some stuff on the sales tax on slide 13.
Okay.
Prior sales tax. When we get there, we can look at some of the projects that were included in that sales tax resolution. So we'll go on to the next slide if there's no other questions.
Yep, I think we're good, we're good. Okay, yes ma'am.
The next slide you guys have is the PICO history. And this, we just include for historical knowledge because people always ask about the PICO money and this what used to be the old tax money from phones and everybody's moved away from landlines. So we haven't received PICO money for any new construction, at least since 1314, but it's been longer than that. And then we haven't had maintenance money from PICO since fiscal year 1819. The next slide is on historical impact fees. You guys can see the collection rates prior to the new impact fee resolution were in three categories, single-family homes, multifamily homes, and mobile homes. This impact fee resolution went into effect in October of 2006 and then was suspended by the board, the prior board in 2011 because of the economic outlook after the recession. These funds are restricted to growth-related capital projects. The next slide will show you how we spent those impact fees on the right side and different additions we did and lands we purchased. You can see some of the land and site testing we did is in some of the same areas that the new schools are going into for this, this new year. The revenues that we've been receiving have mostly just been interest over the last few years. So the 2024, 25 impact fees, these were reinstated in March of 2024. You guys are probably very familiar with this. So good job, board. And they will go into effect July of 2024. And you guys can see we went from having about three different categories to I think there's eight now of classifications of the, the homes. The money that we're expected to receive from the impact fees is being used 100% to pay for the debt service on the certificates of participation. So we're using that and then also a portion of the 1.5 mils.
Chair, for the purposes of the community conversation, I just need you to exemplify the reason we can use it to debt service, the certificate of participation is because this, all of the impact fees, because I think there's a little bit of twitchy language there that is not pure. An impact fee theoretically could be collected in Fort McCoy. And if an impact fee is collected in Fort McCoy, that is not going to be used to debt service or to certificate of participation.
That's correct.
So, so I just think, could you rephrase what you said? Because that comes back to me as a board member, I don't know, maybe I see lots of other heads nodding. I just think we can't say exclusively all impact fees are being used for debt service because they're not all being collected in the proper zones for that.
Yes, so the, the estimate we got from the planning department did assume that the collection for the impact fees would be in the areas of growth where the new schools are being built. That's why we're able to do the assumption that we're able to use that impact fee to pay for the debt service. If the impact fees are not collected in those growth areas, they of course would be ineligible to pay for the certificates of participation and have to be held for growth-related items in those areas.
Okay, thank you for that asterisk. And honestly, if that asterisk, what you just said very eloquently, could get added to every single thing we say we're using impact fees for servicing the debt, that would be beautiful for me because every time this comes up and I say that statement, because I say a very similar statement to you, I immediately get hit with that you can't do that, that's not legal. And technically, they're true because if a home is built in Fort McCoy or a home is built in Reddick or a home is built in maybe Lake Weir, I don't know, I'd have to go through the lines. But my point is, it's not that pure because we are building homes. I built a home in Anthony two years ago. There's a home being built a couple of blocks down from me. So I know people are building in other areas. So I just want to make sure that we are incredibly clear about how we're spending the money and we don't put ourselves in a muddy water.
Yes, so the, when the impact fees are distributed to us from the county, they are supposed to have a breakdown of the areas that they come from and we would only use the impact fees for the areas of growth that the new schools are in.
And that's exactly what we've had to do, you know.
Historically, yes.
Right.
So the next slide is going to be on the sales surtax revenue. And this might have a little information that you were looking for, Dr. James. So the cost estimate for the sales tax, you can see there is Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks, Liberty Middle School. The Marion Oaks Elementary School, it was split funded, but still part of the sales tax. Also Legacy Elementary. Middle School DD, it looks like it, there is an X, an elementary W, which was not survey recommended. So since the last couple of years of revenue we received in this fund have been interest on that fund balance we have sitting there.
And there was not a specific, I mean, this is not a question for you per se, I guess maybe Ms. Dobbins or someone in planning, but what was elementary W not survey rec? Does anyone have historical information about what that was? Is there a way we could work in the planning department, Dr. Gullett, to go back and figure out what that was?
Yes, we can certainly do, I don't know, and I know the team knows, but we will certainly research that and get back to.
I mean, based on information from Ms. Dobbins, it does seem like we're going to be short money to cover all the gaps. So applying it directly to middle school DD, as Dr. Campbell mentioned, is probably the smoothest thing to do because realistically, we're probably going to be short 5 million, so we could just slide it over. But I would love to know what elementary W is, because we have another elementary W right now we're doing, so I just wonder.
Ms. Buston Ellis, you're, you're not aware, are you, from years past? Sorry.
I would prefer that we go back and do the research, but I think, remember, every year or every few years, the survey comes through. And at that time, it was not survey recommended. But the, the good thing about the sales tax is, is you have more flexibility on spending those dollars. And to address Dr. Campbell and Dr. James' questions, yes, we could use it on DD and we probably could use it on W. And even Liberty, I believe. So those were the original schools and that's what would, would, we would be inclined to use it for. So we can go back and make sure we provide an email to you with, with the specifics. But I do believe at that time, it was not survey recommended. And everything else, we just ran out of money. As you can see, we were using 1.5 mil, we were using some other class size money that we had received. So we used it till, till it was gone.
I just have one more question. So when you said we have to spend the certificate of participation first, do we have to spend what we line itemed to spend? So for instance, the projection for Liberty Middle School, not to bring up a wound from two nights ago, but that was budgeted for, you might know, what was that budgeted for in the certificate of participation?
Do you know? Okay, we don't know.
But I think the amount that we approved on, on Tuesday night was higher than that. So, do we have to spend the full budgeted amount from certificate of participation? And then we could take the difference from this sales tax to cover that gap for Liberty Middle School wing?
If, if, if that is how it's presented to you, we certainly could do that. We have some gaps in what we put in the certificate of. We have some gaps in what we put in the certificate of participation, but we have gone back and talked to the attorney, and we could make changes, but it has to go back through that whole process.
But if it's easier to just close the gap with a little bit of fluff funds we have here, I mean, I know 5 million's not going to go far, but if it would save a headache from the team and not have to go back and get through the minutia of Liberty Middle School costing 9.2 instead of 7.7 or whatever the number was, and we could just take some funds from this and move the, move the plan forward, if that makes everyone's life easier as a board member, if that's the most efficient way to go, I'm, I could, I could be convinced that we should proceed that way.
Well, we could, we can go back and get with, with our facilities department and look at what funds are allocated for what project. But as I stated before, what we did in those schools with the sales surtax is we used a myriad of funds, whatever funds were available, and put them together. So, that is a possibility, but I think some of these other projects are coming in a little bit higher than what we have in the certificate of participation. And again, I had a discussion with the attorney, and we can make changes, but it has, a resolution has to be done, it has to come back before you, but, you know, it's up to what you as a board members want to do, and we will work with facilities to make sure and ensure that we balance the needed funds. Remember, we have 1.5 mils available as well, and I think we are using that to bridge the gap for some other projects that have come in a little bit higher than estimated.
Could, is it, I'm sorry to like, keep asking questions about this, but I just want to best understand, is it possible, Ms. Dobbins, would you be able to just share is, would that make your life easier to just borrow some of the sales tax money to finish Liberty Wing so that we could proceed and not have to hold up on the, because if we do a resolution and all the things, that takes time and board meetings and all, and then legal fees, right? I mean, so, Mr., I don't know, Ms. Dobbins?
Morning.
Good morning, and great questions. So after this presentation, as you, you well know, I present the five-year plan, which is, talking about this upcoming year. It, it is a great discussion with that previous sales tax and some of those schools, you are exactly right, on several of the projects currently funded by the COP, we are over as the original projection. Currently, what I will present is that we pull it out of the 1.5 mil, but it doesn't preclude us from going back, sitting down and analyzing it all together and saying, you know, which one's more efficient and effective and, and gets us what we need at the cheapest rate, whether there's legal fees or anything else. So, so we'll present it as we are over, it is covered in the 1.5 moving forward, but if we can flex those funds out effectively and efficiently, we can make those changes as the year goes, and then leverage that money for projects that are currently unfunded.
Okay, well, thank you. As a board member, I just want to say I'm on board with the team based on which projects in the COP we can use the sales tax for, the team using that almost 5 million dollars at their discretion so that they can meet whatever, whatever gap there is.
And I've noted what was discussed, and when I do my presentation, I'll highlight where that money could potentially help out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Campbell?
Sure, and not trying to belabor any of the points that have been made thus far, because I know you have 62 slides, we're on Slide 13. But just for a point of note, we know where our live-in districts are, where impact fees will be collected. We know that at least three of us have projects that are currently under construction, but potentially, Dr. James doesn't have any construction projects right now, and so if there is anything built on the north side, then those impact fees will have to go into a different bucket, we understand that. And I'm, I don't believe Ms. Thorough has any construction projects in her live-in districts either, so it, it's pretty, right, yet, but I mean, that are currently funded under, under the certificate of participation. So, at least three of us, where the majority of the growth is occurring, do have projects currently underway in those areas, so we have a significant portion of the county covered. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any else? Dr. James?
Well, just to clarify though, homes built in the shores and collected, impact fees collected in the shores can only be used for Lake Weir Middle School?
They can be used on growth projects and the zoning where they're.
Well, yes, but when we're talking about, going back to the, the statement that was made, that all impact fees are being used to debt service certificate of participation, if an.
And let me clarify also, down to the absolute single one, like one house built.
Yes.
Impact fees collected from that may not be commingled and spent in another district outside of a set of special circumstances where there is a neighboring conjoined district and there's specific justification which requires a different process. So, when these, when these collections are made, they are to be, the, the data as to where those addresses are, is maintained by the county, given to us, and we are to keep those completely isolated, not commingled, then the debt service for a project in a specific EBD zone is going to go, if, if that's what we're using as paid debt service, then it's not just, all of the, all the money we have goes to that educational benefit district.
That, well, that's what I'm, I'm just trying to, like, there's, the most of the growth is happening in Marion Oaks and all of that area, and so, it's not going to be an issue for a couple of years, because we got a lot of debt. But when we get, when we get a few years in to debt servicing this, we're going to have to get a little bit more nitty-gritty on, this was collected over here, I mean, yes, Dr. Campbell's right, there are three districts that are going to have collections, but there's one that's going to have the most collections. And so, I just am very, very hesitant to use a statement that says they're all going to be used, I guess, is my point, but Dr. Campbell made me think of that, because a home in the shores has to go to, if we're going to use it for a COP debt service, it has to go specifically to address Lake Weir Middle School, because that's the only thing being built because of growth in the COP.
And if it does not, then that is retained in an account for use on growth, and there are certain, the definitions of growth, including technological development, it's specific, but it can be used, for example, north side can only be used in the north side. If you build a home in Fort McCoy, those dollars don't go somewhere else.
Correct.
So, that then can be used to fund a, a certain infrastructural changes, new growth, new building, certainly even in some cases, technology with a site that is also within that same EBD, the Educational Benefit District. Otherwise, it's not commingled, thrown into a big pot, and right now, we're building over here, so all that money goes over here, or collectively to this, or it's got to be absolutely laid out and, and.
I'm sorry to belabor the point, I just, I want to be really crystal clear about that, because the business sector of our community definitely hits back when we say statements like that, and I just want to make sure they know that we know what we're doing, so. And I know that you know what you're doing, so I just want to make sure it's clear.
Yes, like I said before, we, of course, our estimate that we got assumed that, but these are all estimated numbers right now at tentative budget time, and we will be adjusting this once we actually start receiving the impact fees, you know, we look at the budgets monthly, this isn't something that is, we bring it to you guys today and it stops. We definitely are adjusting and looking at it very, very frequently, so don't think it's one and done, okay? So we'll move on, the next slide has quite a bit of information on it, so I will kind of give a brief overview and let you guys read through it. So the first little bit of the columns here are the funded capital projects, and this is funded with the 1.5 mils new projects, and I just want to remind you guys, this was what was planned as of July 19th. So when Ms. Dobbins comes up and presents the five-year work program, she is going to have up-to-date projects that they're prioritizing as of probably more recently than July 19th. So we have to pick a date to stop, so there is changes in these funded projects' numbers with the 1.5 mils from this year. We have a second category that just itemizes all the projects that are inside of the COPs that are rebudgeted in 2425. And then there's a third list that carries on to Slide 15 that shows you all of the carryover projects, and this means that the work is in progress as of the end of last fiscal year, but we are moving them forward into fiscal year 2425. The la, or, there's a grant section, and this is the money that we get from grants that's mostly used for safety and security of buildings, and then also, we got a grant for the Marion Technical College to build, I believe it was the aviation building, and that was a big chunk of money that they got. And the last section is the charter school capital outlay. They get, they now get a portion of the 1.5 mils that started last fiscal year as a House Bill, House Bill 1259 that was passed, allowed them to share in that 1.5 mils, and then also the PICO money that passes straight through the charter schools. So I'll let you guys kind of read through those, and then if you have questions on any. But remember, my list is as of July 19th.
I, I have a quick question. So, we certainly have a buses allocation here, but we also have a separate allocation for vehicles, at, and potentially vehicles or just replacement of white fleet, et cetera. At, at what point, or at any point in this budget, has there been conversation about activity buses for, specifically for high schools? I'm assuming that's not in that vehicle fund, but I was just curious.
The vehicles, as I know, are like custodial and maintenance vehicle replacements, and then the buses of our, our course, new buses and replacement. I know they did move forward with purchasing some vans last year for transportation, but I do not believe it was for high school activities.
Okay. And I, it's not going to be in Ms. Dobbins' five-year work plan, because she doesn't cover anything with transportation, but let the record show, this board member is still very, very interested in ensuring that our high schools specifically have access and either they're individually for each high school or what have you, we need activities, vehicles specifically for our high schools. We need them. And where that money's coming from, I don't know, but we need it.
Thank you. Yeah, I sure don't disagree, and I think in the past, you know, as, as buses had, were reaching the end of their serviceable time to be driving all over a county, the state of Rhode Island, they were able to be used for activity buses, and so I would agree that with an eye to that, making sure that we have the support for the high schools that, that they need for those activities would, would be a good endeavor for us, so let the record show. All right. In the interest of time, should we continue moving, and then as we continue to peruse this and have questions, we can certainly ask them. We good? Keep going? Keep going.
All right, so we'll move on to debt service. This is a transfer from capital, it pays 98% of the debt service. We do get a small amount of money from the racing commission funds, and then a little bit from CODS, and then a small amount from local, which is interest. So the expenditures are principal, interest, and dues and fees, and you guys can see that the interest increased quite a bit this year, and that is because of the certificates of participation, the interest is front-loaded. So we'll look at the revenue kind of in a little more detail, the state funding is the CO and DS, 113,000, and the racing commission funds, and this is a portion we get from the dog, dog races, and that's 223,000. The local revenue is the investment income, and then of course, the largest portion is the transfer from the Capitals Improvement Fund.
We're still getting dog racing money? I thought that was.
I thought that's illegal.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I thought that dog races went away.
Right.
Paramutual wagering and there's, there's, it's.
From other states and stuff?
No.
Because I thought it was.
Horse racing.
Oh, horse racing, yeah, but.
Not dog racing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We took care of that a few years ago.
I think that's illegal now.
Okay, just know, because there was a Greyhound farm not far from our house. All of a sudden, they were gone.
The debt service fund expenditures are primarily interest for fiscal year 2425, and that is the, mostly due to the certificates of participation, and then we'll pay about 9 million dollars in principal, and then a small amount in dues and fees for the debt We pay for the Kobe bonds, the certificates of participation, a small amount for the revenue bonds, and then also a payment on the lease purchase agreement from the 2019 bus lease purchase. The next slide shows the outstanding debt we have as of June 2024, and the schedule will show you that for the Kobe bonds, the original amount issued was 895,000, and the final payout will be done in January of 2025. We currently have outstanding principal and interest in the total of 113,000, and this was used to refund a portion of the 2005 certificate of participation, and I believe that was Forest High School and Greenway Elementary School. The revenue bond is, was issued for 2.7 million, the final payout will be of December of 2031, and we currently have outstanding 1.6 million dollars, and this is what we get the racing commission funds is used to pay for. We have three certificates of participation outstanding right now, and the total of those for the issuance was 366 million. We'll pay off Series 2014 in June of 2025, Series 2015B in 2027, and then Series 2024 will be paid off in 2044. Total outstanding right now for the certificates of participation is 506 million dollars. The bus lease purchase from 2019, this was 150 school buses, the original issue amount was 15 million, they'll be paid off in March of 2029, and we currently have 9.1 million dollars outstanding. The debt capacity, so we're allowed in statute to use up to three-fourths of the capital outlay millage levy for debt service. The recommendation from the financial advisors is 50%. Currently, with our current debt payments and the issuance of the COPs, we're at 47.03%. And this did increase significantly from last year, from about 20% due to the issuance of the certificates of participation. You guys know we have to.
Quick point of clarification, when the sales tax passes in November, I use when instead of.
I like your optimism.
That percentage will go down because our revenue for capital projects will go up? Is that correct?
No, the percentage is based only on the 1.5 millage levy.
Okay.
But we'll feel a lot better.
Yes.
Yes, and we'll be able to pay it down faster, hopefully, if we want to. All right, thank you.
So we, every year, we have to get a credings, credit ratings evaluation. This year, because we issue, or in 2324, because we issued the certificates of participation, we did get two ratings, both by Moody's and Fitch. So, they both have their own individual scales that they use. Moody's rating is based on the economy and tax base, finances, management, and debt and pension. As you can see, this year, we did get an upgrade by Fitch for our general obligation and the certificates of participation, and Moody's affirmed our general obligation rating, but upgraded our certificate of participation rating, and... So, do you guys have any questions on debt service? So I'll move on to special revenue food service. So the special revenue food service fund, they're anticipating a total revenue of 50 million dollars and expenditures of 51 million dollars. They do have a fund balance they're able to use to fund some of those additional expenditures. So they're estimating about 47 million dollars in federal revenue. So they're estimating about $47 million in federal revenue, about 20,000 from transfers in, 1.6 million for local and 422 for state. Their total expenditures used for salary and benefits is about 38% of their budget. Purchase services is about 2%. Energy services, 2%. Material and supplies is about 48%. And this is where all the food costs are located, is in that category. They do have some money set aside for capital outlay, about 10% of their budget. And then other is about 2.5%. We go to the next slide. This shows the income and expense. So you can see that they have been growing their fund balance since about 2021. And then because food service does set a limit on the amount, the actual state sets a limit on the amount they're allowed to have in fund balance, they are trying to spend down some of that. So the increase that, for fiscal year 23, they did have a decrease in their reimbursement rates from the 22, 23 year. And then they have budgeted an increase in expenditures. They had the cafeteria monitor staff move back in from Esser. And they did try to replace multiple equipments in several of the cafeterias this year. So that is why you see the decrease there. If you guys want additional information, I do believe Ms. Ramona is here. If you guys want her to go into any more details on those items.
Everybody's okay?
Okay. So we'll move on. So the revenue sources, the first page is just a summary of the federal, state, local and other financing sources. The next page will have some more detail. So you can see this year, the lunch reimbursement is up. And that is due to the rates are up from prior year. And they're also estimating an increase in the number of meals served by 1 to 2%. The increase for the school breakfast reimbursement is due to the same thing. We have an increase in rates and are expecting to serve more meals. There's a swing from the after-school snack reimbursement because they don't have that extra hour of extended learning. But I think they have moved some of that into the supper because of the timeframe there. So it's kind of just a switch in what revenue source is funding. Commodities has an increase and that is due to just the, they have extra money that they've been willing to give, I, I believe, Ms., the food service department in the commodities. There's no other large changes there. So if you guys have, don't have any questions, we can move on to the state revenue.
Ready?
And the state revenue has stayed relatively stable. There's not any significant changes. For the local revenue, it's also fairly stable. There is some increases in investment income. And that's, we've seen that across the whole, the whole budget because of just the increased rates there. Small increase in student lunches and not much change in any of the other areas. The last item is the transfers. And this is the portion that general fund pays for the Camp Kewahana's, providing this food service there. And that is done at year-end. So as of when we pull tentative budgets, it had not occurred, but it, it will. And it's always right around $20,000. So for slide 31, you guys have a handout. You actually have a handout for the reimbursement rates too, if you guys need to reference those. But the increase in the salaries is listed there. And you can see there's, there's a breakdown of the units and the increase. And I know they, that Fordham did start their own food program. And then they maybe added some other cafeteria workers. For the purchase service, the only large increase there was in their other purchase services. And that's part of their, they're doing a contract for cleaning and sanitation and then some training through that company on that. And then also for the uniforms for the staff. For energy services, there is not a lot of change. And that would include natural gas electricity, electricity and gasoline, so. For the materials and supplies, there is an increase in the food costs. And that is based on multiple things. It's the number of lunches that we're expected to serve. And then also, we switched to a new vendor for food. They're not charging additional price or the costs aren't more, but they do have a wider, wider variety of meals that they provide. So the food service department is able to order different items than they were from the last vendor. So they are looking into ordering some of those more specialty items from them. The jump in commodities is due to a calculation with the pre-COVID numbers is what Ms. Ramona was explaining to me yesterday. So they have adjusted that now to our new meal numbers after COVID. We'll move on to the capital outlay. So the big increase here is in the furniture fixtures and equipment over $1,000. Because food service does have an excess of fund balance, they are planning in providing some of the equipment for the new elementary schools. And then they're also replacing some large ticket items in different cafeterias, including walk-in freezers, ovens. The vehicles line, they are trying to purchase four vehicles to transport meals and foods to different satellite sites. The last section is going to be the other expenses. And then the increase in the substitutes line is the, they have a contract for the substitutes and the cafeteria workers. And they're, they are having an increase in that contract, both in the rate that they're paying the subs. And then also, they're trying to have them feel more of the position. So right now, I don't think they're able to get as many substitute workers as they need. So the food service fund balance, we're estimating at the end of 24, 25, they'll have 20.8 million dollars. So food service is allowed to have three months' worth of average expenditures in fund balance. Anything over that, they do have to plant, write a plan that they're going to spend the money on. Can you hear?
I think, I think it's crazy that the, I'm assuming that's a federal government regulation, right? Because it's federal government money? I just think it's hilarious that they dictate how we should save our money, but the federal government has like no money. I just find it comical. Sorry, that's just like a word vomit thought I had. I'm, it's crazy that they're making us spend money. Right? We literally, we, we- Which is great. I mean, we're buying new equipment and all the things, but it's just so cliche that the federal government is going to force us to spend money. But anyhow.
So they, they'll have a plan of what they'll spend that additional funds that they have remaining in fund balance on. So that is all we have for food service unless you guys have any other additional questions.
I don't have a question for you. I guess it's just for, more for Dr. Gullett and the board's consideration. I believe I heard that, you know, finding substitutes in, in food service is not easy. And so at another time, I think it would be good to try to focus on that. You know, we know it's a big undertaking to get kids through the lines and give them time to eat and all of that. And so it would be good maybe to get an outline of what the duties are and maybe see what we can do to market it and make it a little more attractive to folks to come and help out. That's all.
I could see a fun lunch lady marketing campaign.
Exactly right. Especially when they brought back the cinnamon rolls.
They are so good.
When they used to really cook. Times have changed.
Yep.
Okay. We'll move on to the special revenue fund. This is going to be all the other grants. So Esser and our entitlement grants. So we're estimating about $68 million in special revenue funds this year. 92% of it is federal revenue. 4 million is local and 1.3 is state. The total expenditures are about six, are 68 million. 56% of this is used on salary and benefits. 18% on purchase service, less than 1% on energy, 8% on material and supplies, 7% on capital outlay and 10% on other. The next slide is the historical grant funds. And this is total dollars of expenditures. And you guys can see 23, 24 is the highest we've had at 115 million dollars. When we have this slide next year, you guys will actually see the Esser funding cliff because it'll be down to about 60 million dollars. And then the year following, we should be back at about 40 million dollars, which has been the historical average pre-COVID. So the special revenue fund, this is the grant list. So this is every grant that is included in all of the other special revenue. Fund 40, it's special revenue fund emergency relief funds. This is all the different grants that we currently have remaining money for the 24, 25 year. So this, these end September 30th, 2024. Trying to give you guys a second to read through it, but if there's no questions on any of those. So we can move on to slide 43. It's just a summary of the different types of revenue in the special revenue fund. You can see that the changes from budget to budget is very significant, specifically in the federal through state line. And this is going to be a reoccurring thing in the whole rest of this presentation. And that's because of the Esser funds. So we don't have the additional funding this, this upcoming year. Then next, slide 44, miscellaneous federal direct. This is the Pell grant. And so there is no changes there. Slide 45 is where you're going to see the, the bulk of the revenue sources. And the largest one again is going to be 3271 Educational Stabilization Fund. And that is where the Esser revenue came in at. Slide 46 is going to be state funds. There is not any significant changes in state funding. Slide 47 has the local revenue. And the biggest portion of this is the internal, I'm sorry, the school accounts, that 3.7 million dollars. So we are required to record the school accounts on, in the special revenue fund. And there's no change from prior year. So we'll move on to the expenditures. And the first section is the salaries and benefits. And you guys will see a very large decrease in here, about 40 million dollars. And this is the staff that was in the Esser grants that we did move back into the general fund. So the positions aren't gone, they're in another funding source.
We applaud you all for figuring that out.
Right.
So in-
Oh, we do have a question or comment?
I actually have a question back on slide 42. I'm sorry, you said, give us a moment to look over this chart. And then I was looking over it and I haven't left it even after you kept going. I'm sorry. Specifically on the two allocations there for homeless. So does this indicate that we only receive about $236,000 for our McKenney Vento kids? Or are there other funding sources specifically for that group of students? I, I don't know, just, I actually am going to have a conversation later about some of those students and the designations and such later today. And so just seeing them in this grant list here has highlighted it's about $236,000 there. And is that all we receive for our McKenney Vento kids? Or is there a different funding source?
Yeah. Yeah, I've got it. So I'm not 100% sure on the specifics of this grant. So they would have written in for a specific purpose. We can go back and get that information for you. Yeah, one of them is going to be carryover because the, the timing of the grant period does extend into 24, 25. And so I think that grant runs like August to September, September to September. But we can go back and get that information for you.
Sure, I, I'm just specifically curious about that student population. We, we know we have, you know, more than 1,000 students. Number's probably more than 2,000 whenever we get down to it, students that qualify. But if this is the only funding source for that specific population and all we provide for them, that's, that's my question really. And I don't know if that, if this is the only funding source, so.
If you're asking about supplemental funds, so they would receive basic funds. But they, these are the special revenue fund grants. There's two, I believe. The carryovers, Carrie indicated. And then the regular homeless grant for 24, 25 of 118,000. And they also have some funding through the Esser ARP, homeless children and youth to the tune of 379. I think there is funding that's in the internal funds also that supports that. But we can certainly get with Mr. Butler and identify all of the funding sources. But they, these are supplemental. It's not the, the regular basic funding, which all students get.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think we are on slide 49. You guys are going to be seeing a decrease across all of these because of Esser funding going away. But the largest decrease here was in the professional and technical services. And this was the learning management system that's no longer being paid for by Esser, but in a different funding source. There wasn't any significant change for energy services. For materials and supplies, you'll see a decrease in consumable supplies. And Esser was paying for the additional cleaning supplies for many years since, since COVID. And we, that's all been brought back into the general fund. And then a decrease in the 5,900, and that was mostly for books. On the next slide, the capital outlay. You guys will see large decreases here in furniture. And that was mostly technology-related furniture, things such as IFPs, Chromebooks. They also did a large purchase for replacement of some switches. And then in the remodeling area, that is the HVAC and covered plate projects that were put on the Esser grant. On the next section, the other expenses, the large decrease here in the 7,500 was the substitute costs. And then a small decrease in miscellaneous expense, which is the indirect cost. There's no other questions on special revenue. We can move forward to the internal service fund. And this is where we put both the health insurance and the other general insurance. And the health insurance has moved to being self-funded. So the total revenue is 88 million dollars. Total expenditures, 88 million dollars. This is funded by local and also the fund balance. So we pay for insurance claims as the- So we pay for insurance claims as the other section, also a small portion of salaries and benefits, and then purchase services. The next slide will break down just the property and casualty and workers' compensation of the insurance. And that's about $10 million. And we pay for, of course, the insurance premium out of here. And then also, I think it's, a couple of staff are paid out of here to manage this. Slide 57 has the, the historical fund balance for the Property and Casualty Insurance Fund. And this will go back to 2007, 2008. And then as you can see for 2324, we're expecting an ending fund balance of $4.4 million. For the Health Insurance Fund, we're expecting $78 million in revenue, and the expenditures are 49 million, and that's insurance claims. The purchase services is 5.5 million, of course, the small amount of salaries and benefits, and then also a small portion for fund balance. The Slide 59 is going to be historical fund balance for the Health Insurance Fund. And for 2324, we're expecting an ending fund balance of about $18.9 million. And this is not including, we'll have adjustments to make. Sorry, that does include, the 18.9 million does include the adjustments we make for the, the June premium and also for the expenses incurred but not reported. That's the end of the presentation.
Thank you, great job. Very comprehensive. It's a pleasure to continue to see how well we're doing with our health insurance and especially in the today's market. Thank you.
Dr. Gullett? Just, I just, thank you Chair, I just wanted to say thank you to the team again. So much work goes in behind the scenes to put together this well-designed presentation, but thank you all again for your, your work.
Absolutely. Is there any public comment? All right, well, seeing none, we will move on to Board Committee Reports and Concerns. Anything from...
We have a five-year work plan.
Oh, shoot, we have a five-year work plan. Sorry about that. Yes, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break. It is 11:10, and we'll plan to come back by 11:20. Thank you.
I didn't hear that part. I heard the next part, I thought...
Oh, no, we're not gone. No, we're not done yet.
All right, we are back on at 11:21 and we are ready for our next topic.
Right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Now Ms. Dobbins is ready and is prepared to present the five-year facilities work program. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair, Thriller Vice Chair Conrad, Board Members Superintendent, Dr. Gullett. Thank you. We're here to talk about our five-year facility work plan. I just want to give kudos to Kayla Johnson, who we work with hand in hand with facilities and finance. She does an amazing job and a great presentation today. She took you through the finance lens, which is very deep and in the weeds. I'm hoping to bring you out of the weeds a little bit. I'll talk about this upcoming year, but we'll also culminate with the five-year plan and what it looks like. My goal here is to paint the picture of what our needs are and what our limits are. So how do we get to today? We start in the spring pulling work order information, systems performance, our plant survey, and we start that review in the spring. We also send out in the spring a principal survey, and we ask principals to submit their capital outlay projects that they feel are in prioritized order for their campus. It also, in that survey, gives us an opportunity to respond to say that this isn't a capital outlay. Actually, all you need to do is submit a track at our work order and we can address those concerns. Then, starting in the summer, we start drafting the work program through the prioritization process. My hat's off to our foreman, who are located in our technical services department, because we take and put every project on the Excel sheet, and we rely on them and their expertise and their systems to tell us where our priorities are, because they're the ones, they're and their team are the ones really working on those systems and know which ones are in dire need, which ones are good, and which ones are limping along. We then move the presentation to the executive leadership for input, and then here we are today in the red, the school board review. We hope to bring this plan to the board for approval September 24th, and then we look to electronically submit it by the deadline to the state on October 1st. So you've seen the funding revenue for the capital outlay, and I'm going to break it down a little bit more simplistically, specific to the facilities and maintenance department. As pointed out, what's in the red is that previous sales tax. I'll highlight those funds where we will have those discussions based on our previous presentation about how we might be able to leverage those funds into appropriate projects. But this is in green because this is money in, this is the money we receive. As you already heard this morning, we don't receive PICO dollars, but we are a pass-through for the capital outlay PICO dollars for charter schools. That's that $571,000. That $571,000 is not included in our final total for revenue in my presentation. Also, you see that we do receive some state funds for the motor vehicles on the CONDS. We do not receive anything for sales tax yet, and you see the projected impact fee of $15 million that was discussed previously. Then you see the projected $56 million for the local revenue. So that's money in. Green is always a good sign, right? So let's talk about money out in simplistic form. So for this upcoming year, we are looking at $2 million being allocated to buses. This is an increase of $1 million. We're going to hit a bubble of that mass purchase of those buses coming offline or needing more maintenance. So depending on our revenue source in the future, this really needs to increase to about $4 to $5 million each year. But right now, what we can do is $2 million for the upcoming year. Vehicles, Ms. Campbell, to your point, that $780,000 is for white fleet vehicles. All of these vehicles are in the technical services department, and these are the trucks our crews drive to work on our schools. You'll see those come back to the board for approval individually. Charter schools' capital outlay, as previously discussed, the 1.5 mil, we will be sending $147,000 to the charter schools that receive that portion of our 1.5 mil. If you look to the future, you see that percentage goes up each year. We also have the standard 4.5 million maintenance transfer. This is to address our maintenance projects. And then you see the big change of $26 million for the debt service, and again, that comes out of the capital outlay for that COP, which is the loan we drew. You'll also see the next two lines are leased portables. That's our monthly rental of our leased portables, and then the purchases we've made for portables, and that is coming in at $3.8 million. The $91,000 is for equipment to replace worn-out equipment and technical services. So we have our revenue in, then we have our revenue out in red, and you're looking at $40.3 million going out.
Chair, I just have one question, brief. And maybe Ms. Boston Ellis could just nod to answer. When we pay the charter school capital outlay, is that in a lump sum, or is that prorated over 10 months and it goes with their monthly payment?
February.
February. Okay. And it's based on their February FTE, or?
So the charter schools' portion of the 1.5 mils is actually based on their COFTI numbers. So this is a calculation that the state does. It takes in consideration our debt payments and the COFTI numbers for the school districts across our whole district, all the schools across our whole district. The state gets our information on our debt service, our 1.5 mils. They come up with the COFTI number, and then in February, they'll send us a breakdown of how much we're required to send each charter school, based on the charter schools' eligibility. To get the 1.5 mils, the charter schools have to meet the capital outlay eligibility that's set. It's in statute. I could get the number for you, but there's several qualifications they have to meet to be eligible for the 1.5 mils.
School grade is a part of that eligibility?
Yes, I think the language is, is no consecutive Fs or three consecutive years under a C, below a C, but we could get the actual language. There's several criteria they have to meet.
Well, seeing as we had one that's an initial grade but fell below a C, would they be eligible?
Yes, they're still eligible because it's two consecutive Fs.
So two consecutive Fs. So then also Macintosh, even though they were an F, are eligible?
Yes, because last year, I believe their school grade was a C. And we could get all that data for you if you'd like it.
Understood. Thank you.
So on this slide, we want to illustrate the upcoming expenses. And really, what I want to point out is, when you narrow down what are we spending our money on, it really comes down to the debt service being about 65% of our overall expenses in facilities. Then you're seeing between portables, and this is important because portables are due to growth. And we are at a 10% budget of expenditures for leased and purchased portables. And then you see the property insurance coming in at 7%. So what does this, what does this mean for this upcoming year? I try to really break this down into what is available new money, not rollover money, not certificate of participation money. So in that green, that money in, we have approximately $400 million coming in. But when you take all of the expenditures and you take all of the previous rollovers, so for example, we're building those elementary schools, but they have been rolling over from year to year. What it comes down to do, when you do that simple math, is we only have $32.2 million, $32.3 million worth of new projects. And that's not a lot to put toward maintenance, and most certainly isn't a lot to put toward new construction. So how do we plan on spending that $32.3 million in the upcoming year? You can see this in the handout that I also provided. That handout is the five-year plan. This is just the upcoming year broken out. When you see the red font, as noted at the bottom, those, you previously approved those in previous five-year plans. So they are just rolling over because they're still open projects. So what I would like you to focus on is what's in black font. Those are the projects that are new projects that are budgeted out of that $32.3 million that we just discussed. So on this page, you see five different projects spanning from roof to lift station and to some water lines as well. Going on to the next page, you'll see a lot of red, which are rollovers. You'll see another five projects added there from HVAC to flooring. And then on the last page, you'll also see one other project up at Westport for HVACs, not counting the district-wide, that district-wide is standard emergency type of maintenance funding. So when you look at next year and you look at that $32.3 million and where it's going, we have only 11 projects we're able to budget. Out of those 11 projects, four of them are HVAC, three of them are roof, three of them are plumbing, and one is flooring. So we have a lot of unfunded needs there, and I'll get into that in just a second.
I just have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
The line item at the very bottom of Slide 8 for pre-K playgrounds, which is obviously something close to my heart, 576 covers a decent amount of playgrounds. So do you have the schools where those playgrounds are going to be installed, or what does that look like?
I'll send that out to you. I'll break that down. Some of that is also maintenance and so forth, but we do have a plan for those as well. As we stated, we had, when we added those pre-K to every elementary school, our goal is to put pre-K playgrounds there. But I'll break that down for you.
Wonderful.
On this page, what's highlighted in yellow, those are our projects, our new construction funded out of the COP. This is where I want to tie in the previous conversation from the first presentation today. So when you look at elementary school W, X, and Liberty Middle School, you will see that there's also not only the COP, but there is capital outlay funds there. So to Dr. James' point, and I believe Dr. Campbell brought it up, is we are over what we expect it to have out of the COP. So this is the section that we'll go back to the team, facilities and finance, and drill down to see what we can leverage out of those previous sales tax dollars. Those are, school W and Liberty Middle School and DD can, from my understanding, use those dollars, and then we can offset that cost. That is not something that we need to make by October, but it is part of our future planning. Depending on what happens November 5th, right, we'll change a lot of this. I will tell you, the biggest unfunded project that's, that we really need to search and find that money for is that technology and data center, because as you've seen, it is now unfunded for this upcoming year. Any adjustments that we can move dollars away from, so for example, if it's better to use those previous sales tax on school W, then my recommendation would be that that then moves the capital outlay to fund the data center. I think that's our next priority that's unfunded at this point. As of right now, just want to let you know, middle school DD, we are, as of now, projected to come under what we've allocated in the COP. And like Ms. Boston Ellis said, once we start moving through that COP, we can adjust those funds through that resolution. I believe it takes about three months to go through that project, but it's going to naturally happen anyways because you're going to have some projects over, and you're going to have some projects under, and we're going to have to shift that money around.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So the data center is now not happening because it's unfunded?
The debt, yes. It is unfunded for right now, hending another funding source.
But we paid the architect already?
Yes. And we will use those architect plans once we fund it. We just need to see what happens in November and what we can move around.
Wasn't the data center funded through the COP?
No.
What was the funding source previously for the data center?
Capital outlay.
Good news is, is that we are, at least we have a data area that seems to be working, but I'm looking forward to getting that new one built.
Miss, I'm sorry, Chair. Ms. Dobbins, could you maybe share that the original projection, the difference in the projection versus what the actual cost might be and why that's gone unfunded now?
Absolutely. When we started down the track of building the data center, it was estimated to pull just over $6 million out of capital outlay. After it was sized for our district, for our staff, even though we tried, we worked very hard to trim it down. Any further trim downs on that project will interfere with the functionality of the building and the services it provides and the staff. So at that point, we as a leadership decided to pause the project until we get further funding. So we'll look to things like the sale of the warehouse, what happens in November, what, what we get back on projects. So for example, as of right now, we believe elementary W is going to come under the projected amount, and we'll get money back. So it, it just needs a little bit more time to go through that fluid process of what's our final cost on some things, what are we going to get from the warehouse, what can we move over to that previous sales tax to build that. I will tell, it is our recommendation that it is the number-one unfunded project that needs to be done.
Just to wrap that up. So what, when, those plans are only good as they are right now until building code changes, right? And then those plans will have to be updated?
They could possibly be updated if they are changed through legislative changes, building code changes.
So do we know how good those plans are for? Like, do we have that date?
It changes every, it has the potential to change every July 1, based on building code updates. So right now, we have no forecast of what is being recommended for building code changes.
So what I'm trying to say, though, is like our contract with the architect for the data center right now, how long is that contract with them for? When is there an expiration on that contract? When, when are they no longer obligated to work with us for the set amount of money we've already set aside for them? Do you get what I'm trying to say?
I do. I don't know that there's an expiration date on that. What it could mean is that they may come back to us and say, okay, it's been a year and a half. We need to relook at the electrical now, or these new things, and then we would have an amendment to that contract.
Okay, okay. So it could potentially cost us more money because of the delay, unfortunately.
It could. And I, I would suspect that it probably will. Any construction today is cheaper than construction tomorrow, but at this point, we're looking at almost $11 million of need to build the data center the way it needs to be built for that department in this district.
Okay. And then my only other question is, on this slide that we're on right now, nine, the Liberty Middle School wing, is the seven plus the two, the $9 million we approved on Tuesday night, or is the 7.387? We approved a different number on Tuesday night, so I'm just wondering.
Correct. When you combine those, it gives us the total for the GMP, the architect, and also the contract for the CM.
But this, but the CM contract doesn't encompass the furnishings?
The CM and part of the GMP are in that 7.3, and the makeup dollars are at a capital.
Okay. So I think I misunderstand. So then the yellow line item is the, what we designated in the COP language?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
The yellow is the COP, the green at the bottom is the special appropriations for MTI, and then the regular no highlight is the capital outlay designation.
So I'm still struggling, though, because the number we approved on Tuesday night was like 9.2 or something?
Correct.
And that number doesn't include owner furnishings and those kinds of items?
So the 9.2 did not include the FFE. It is for the construction. So part of that 2.8 is to cover the, the rest of the GMP and also the furnishings.
Okay. So the furnishings are like a couple hundred thousand dollars typically?
It depends on the size.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
On this slide, it breaks down, looking at the five-year plan in its entirety. So in the first line where it says funded capacity projects, these are any projects that add seats to our schools. And that's going to be our new schools. And as you can see, in this school year, that's $347 million, with the bulk of that being the loan. For funded maintenance, you'll see $52.3 million of funded maintenance with a healthy $2.2 billion unfunded maintenance. And I want to explain that. You'll see the lighter shade of blue there. What we really did, so this is my third time presenting this five-year plan, and each time, we really are trying to bring into focus what is actually needed. So prior to this five-year plan, we would list a school needing covered walkways as unfunded, or renovation of one building unfunded, and it was small projects. And what, if you look at the handout and you look at the unfunded projects, what we did this year to paint the truest picture we could.
You're referencing a handout, but I don't think we got that.
No, it was attached to the presentation.
Yeah, it's the, it's, it's the, not, it's another PDF, right?
Yes. Yes, it was the third PDF. I'm sorry. So in that PDF that's attached, that is the five-year plan. When you look at the unfunded section, instead of having a bunch of small projects at a school, such as, you know, let's take Bellevue Santos, which was 69 years old. We know we need to replace Bellevue Santos. So instead of listing it as a replacement school and also listing all these small projects, it really was combined into, we just need to replace the school. So when you look at what's on the slide, $1.3 million is replacement or renovation of schools. And you'll see those in the third document that was provided. So those do not count toward capacity necessarily because we're replacing those schools or renovating existing. So when you subtract that 1.3 from that 2.2, that's all the deferred maintenance then. So you're looking at $900 million worth of deferred maintenance and $1.3 billion worth of need to either replace old schools or renovate old schools, keeping in mind that 46% of our schools are over 50 years old, and 78% of our schools are over 30 years old. And you'll see the details in that, in that third handout. So when you combine all five years, you'll see that 79% of our need goes unfunded in the total work plan, and then 21% we are currently funded. And I broke that down even further, because of that 21% being funded, we have a total of 583. Keep in mind that 329 million of that, which is 56% of that total, is from the certificate of participation. So had we not done that certificate of participation, we would be 90% unfunded. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Dobbins.
It's scary.
We started out really optimistic and positive. And now we.
We're our broke best friend.
Had we not gone into such debt, we'd have 90% of everything we need unfunded. All right. As we digest this.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
When we get a sales tax in November, can we, how quickly after that can we expect, or is it possible to come up with a expected plan and power positive thinking and come up with what that would look like, so that the board, if, when we get a sales tax, we could immediately start executing on that plan?
Great question. It's already been happening since the springtime. And let me tell you what that looks like, because I really have to give my hats off to the team of facilities and the team of maintenance. Because what we've really done, because we don't have a, we don't have a collection of data, I know Dr. Campbell has mentioned this before, we don't, we don't have one area we can go to, click on a school, and it tells us how old the HVAC is and how old the flooring is. It's all scattered. We have it now. It's behind the scenes. It's a spreadsheet that facilities and maintenance has been working on, along with our technology department, because it feeds into their fire and safety. We're not done with it yet, but what it looks like is we have But what it looks like is we have a tab for every school. And that tab will tell us, for example, I'm going to pick on Anthony because it's the A in the alphabet. So when you click on Anthony, it will tell you all the buildings of Anthony. And for each building, it'll tell you, here's how old the HVAC system is, here's how old the flooring is, the roof, how old the plumbing is, how old the fire suppression system is, how old the well is, and so forth. And then, once we laid all of that out, it went back to the said departments, meaning foremans or technology. And what we did is then prioritize. So is the system, regardless of its age, in critical replacement need? And if so, we highlighted it red. Or is the system needing to be replaced in five to 10 years? It was highlighted a different color. And then doesn't need replacement for 15 years out? And then the next step, which we're trying to get to, is taking all of that and giving a score rating per school. And then that's where our prioritization comes in. That's our next step. My goal is to have that before that November 5th. And yes, we will bring that back to the board.
Okay. And then my only other question, back on slide seven, Reddick Colliers getting new floor this year, which is exciting for them. Does that include the underutilized wing that exists at Reddick's campus right now? That my hope, and I think Dr. Campbell has echoed this previously, would be that we start really looking at that north end zoning and potentially start utilizing that unutilized wing at Reddick. I know that maybe it would be preemptive to put flooring in before the board makes a decision about that, but I certainly wouldn't want us to have to then go back and revisit a site when we're already out there because it's cheapest to do things when you do them at once.
It is. And it will hinge on whether the flooring needs to be replaced. So the allocation is for entire school, but it, it really, there may be pockets, there may be a classroom that because the floor was ripped, needed to be replaced sooner. So that floor might not be in the entire school. So it's really about going out there and determining exactly which rooms, whether it's laminate flooring or whether it's carpet, and determining which rooms need that replacement.
But will the wing that's underutilized right now be included when they look at the whole site?
Under the review, yes ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. I just would like for that to be a part of that.
Absolutely.
Could you flip forward to slide seven, please? Thanks. I have a question about Oak Crest because this goes back to probably 2008. And it jogged my memory because Board Member James was referencing plans and when they become outdated, which I'm sure by now these are. And it was for a gymnasium of some sort for Oak Crest. Oak Crest is still in tremendous need of PE opportunities. You know, to me, it's not PE when it's raining if they're in a portable with however many kids. They don't even have a covered area outside to have any kind of PE like our newer schools. So, and I had a conversation with the previous supervisor of maintenance a few years ago about what it would take to review that need and get it back in the plan. So that would be my request, to find those old plans, see if any of it is still relevant. And if not, what a new plan would need to look like to get Oak Crest Elementary School into the 21st century.
You would have to tell me what you want to cancel. Out of, if it's for this upcoming year, then of those 11 projects, which one gets canceled? And keep in mind, one of the things we did in the unfunded section is our recommendation is Oak Crest needs to be replaced. And that would include all of those things you're mentioning.
Right. And we're probably a ways from Oak Crest being replaced. And if an outdoor covered PE was, you know, at least covered, not a whole building, then that may or may not impact, you know, when the school gets to be replaced. And I don't know what could be done in the meantime. But if facilities would have a conversation, you know, with the principal and see if that need that was so pressing at least years ago, and then we went through the great recession, so that kicked it off the list. I just would like to see at least some research into it and what we might be able to do. And then at that point, it would be up to the board to make a priority or not.
I would say that the unfunded portion of a covered play is within the unfunded portion of the replaced school. Does that make sense? So in other words, we used to list those things out individually.
Right.
Because we need to paint the truest picture possible to be transparent with our community.
Right.
The school needs to be replaced. And in that replacement would come those covered areas.
And I guess my point is, is that if it, if it would benefit and we could afford to do the covered first and then replace the school when we can.
Understood.
You know, why wouldn't we do that? Or at least think about it?
Understood.
Okay. And to Ms. Thor's point, theoretically, you could save a covered play and rebuild a school.
Correct.
Right.
Depending on.
Yeah.
Where the school would be located on site.
Right.
So that all has to place. Because when you, when you go to replace an Oak Crest, you have to look at the vacant land of Oak Crest and start building there. And would then you, would you incorporate? So it would be a design situation.
Absolutely. And if you can, you can. And if it doesn't make sense, it doesn't make sense. But bringing it back into the conversation is important. You know, we're putting a lot of emphasis on athletics and fitness and nutrition and so, and kids need exercise and they need the ability to do that. And we also need money to do all these things. You know, there's a perception out there that for whatever reason, that the money was there and that we just spent it on the wrong things or squandered it or something. But when we see the true numbers matched with the true needs, we know that there's been more of a need than there has been funding available for a very, very, very long time with the age of our buildings, with the number of buildings we have, with the square footage we have to cover. So it's simply been more need than available funding. And if HVAC goes out, well, that goes to the top of the list. You know, there's things that just have to go to the top of the list and then other things get reshuffled. So I guess I just wanted to make that point. You know, it's like, we were saying earlier about how impact fees are talked about. Well, capital maintenance, you know, is a little bit of a sticking point for me because I see it very clearly. We just have a lot of square footage and a lot of need and not a lot of money. And I don't remember ever having more than enough money and doing, having the ability to do something else with it. So, anyway.
Very welcome. And I can look into that for you.
Appreciate it. All right. Vice Chair comments?
You're muted. Um, thank you for your presentation. One, I just had a request or maybe a suggestion. I have the facilities projects list that you sent out to us ahead of time. Thank you so much. It would be helpful to me if, as you listed the schools and their projects, if you could put how old they are, what year they were built. Also, in the presentation that you shared with us today, it would be, it would be helpful to have it included also, really just to continue the narrative within the community. I know that you're working with this every day. I get out and about and I forget how old, you know, Anthony is or Lake Weir Middle. So it would just be beneficial in the future to help, as a board member within the community, to remind people how old our schools are and how many of them are so old.
I will be happy to do that and I'll do one better. I'll also send you a one-pager that lists all of our schools. Just note that some schools will be, might have multiple dates.
Okay.
So for example, South Ocala is a great example of us replacing a school and keeping a portion of the school. So there are buildings on South Ocala that are really old, but the newer part is within the 2000 and that's the bulk of the school. So we tend to use whatever the majority of the school age is.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
And you might see an R footnoted as renovated as well, like Lake Weir and Vanguard.
All right. Thank you.
I'll be happy to include those.
That'd be very helpful.
That would be the same as for Dr. NH Jones, correct?
Yes. Dr. NH Jones, for sure.
Yes.
Because there's a lot of new buildings.
1959.
But there's newer buildings.
Yes, there's newer buildings there as well.
My next question is just, and Mr. Carlisle might have to step forward, but I've just been noticing with, Dr. James is very optimistic about the sales tax. And so with that coming forward, I'd noticed that the county has also been on social media with a push for their sales tax. And so I wondered where we were in our story for sharing information about that and what we are allowed, allowed to say and present. So I was just curious about that as we look at all of these unfunded items.
Yes. Good morning again. So the statutes are pretty clear on what we can and can't do. We are, we're able to share information. And the way we are doing that, the primary way we are doing that is through our website. Throughout the summer, worked with the team to compile as much information as possible and worked with the awesome group over at Web Development to put that into our website. So at present time, it went live, I believe about two weeks ago. From the homepage, there is a link to a dedicated website that includes a lot of information, key points, I believe it's key points, history of previous sales tax, and then also what the benefits of, of sales tax revenue would be. There's also ballot language on that site. There's a video, the previous video that was done, the facilities walkthrough is on there. And so there's a wealth of information on there that is accessible to the public. Dr. James?
Where?
It's on, it's on the webpage.
Yeah, it's right on the webpage.
I have seen that. I think it's fabulous.
So I'm on the homepage right now though and I.
It's on the, it scrolls.
It'll be a banner?
Yeah, it's a scrolling.
But it's not anywhere at the top and it's not.
Well, it scrolls. Depending on when you open it, may not.
I realize it's on the scroll, but if I don't sit long enough to watch it scroll, I can't find it anywhere else. I can't find it on the top bar. I can't find it in the, which I love, the blue squares because those are the things that I look for most. Like, could we add a blue square that says "Sales Tax Initiative" or something?
Good idea. I do think that's a good idea. I'm just going to share because.
Because like, I've been sitting here while you were talking, kind of distracted to be honest, trying to find it. And I literally can't find it. And I feel like I'm, other than changing my language to a language I can't read recently, I feel like I can manage the internet pretty well and I can't find it, so.
And I was looking for it, so I will just share that. But I do think, when I think about the people that use this website, so our staff and our families, they may spend a few minutes to find it, but typically they know what they're looking for. So they get on and they go look for something, you know, their kid's lunchtime, their website, you know, whatever that information is. So I do think it might be beneficial to make it visible no matter when you hop onto your computer. And so I think that's a good talking point. I just also want to know, can we, are we able to share that link out? Like, as a board member, can I take that information that you've prepared and share it on social media or anywhere else? Is that acceptable?
So I do know, we do plan on sharing via social media infographics, periodic infographics. It is information only. It would not advocate for a position either way. In terms of you all as board members, I do not know the answer to that question. I would have to defer to.
I'm going to interrupt. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I would defer to School Board Attorney to advise the board members on that, just to be clear.
I will send you an email with detailed instructions.
Okay.
That you know exactly where the limits and boundaries are.
Okay.
Okay.
I would hate just to give a broad brush stroke because some things could be very specific.
Okay. I just, I'm coming at it from the lens of sharing our story and our needs. And so I understand the position of the school system in our district and that we can only share information. But as an individual, if I'm able, I think it's important to be able to, to share that story. And if the information's already prepared and put together, that would be very nice. So.
And if I may, Madam Chair, as Mr. Carlisle is beginning to discuss, we have plans to share information about the funding, what it would entail, what it would look like. And so that's planned. But we cannot use taxpayer dollars to do any type of campaigning at all nor have any intention of doing so.
Okay. Do we know what that timeline's going to look like?
Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Ongoing. So I do have plans to attend the next set of principals' meetings. Those are in September, to provide information to our principals so that they are, they can share that information when asked by their staff or even families. They are able to answer questions as long as it is informational, as I've been communicated with. And then beyond that, hoping to get into, communicate and share that information at faculty meetings as well.
And Ms. Dobbins has made herself available on behalf of the facility piece to answer questions, make herself available on her team to faculty meetings, staff meetings? You know, because a lot of people, people want to know for their school, what does this look like? You know, what are our needs and what might the opportunities be to be funded? So question answered, too.
Can I? Oh, I'm sorry.
So with that being said, I've been sitting here thinking, what I, and this isn't necessarily for you, Mr. Carlisle, but what I, beyond the five-year work program, because I don't think we have any questions about changing it or anything like that. I believe that I would definitely agree, and I'm certain that the rest of the board would agree, that the project that we had hoped would already be funded be the next priority, that that data center be absolutely the next priority. Whatever funding sources that we get in, let's make that happen because then that, as we know, frees up additional property. Okay, moving on from that.
What I want to sort of ask in attorney powers as well as the team here, is it feasible for this board then to say, of this five-year work plan that is unfunded, here are our next priorities? Because that further paints the picture. I know we can't necessarily say, if we get the sales tax, we'll do this. But if we could say, these are the next top priorities, if it's a replacement of Anthony is next after that data center, or if it's a new wing at Bellevue High, or I'm just going down the alphabet like you did too. But I mean, there are several replacement projects in this overall five years that you have a new Dunn Allen High School, you have a new, there's lots of big projects and they're in addition to smaller. Rubberized tracks across the district, that would cost us $7 million. So, so is there a way for us to do that and then that not be us selling the sales tax but telling the real story of what this board believes are the next priorities should November come around and be positive?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, delegating, designating out what your priorities are and how you would intend to spend those funds, things like that, that's within the realm of what is permissible. But it's, again, just, I believe the statute's fairly straightforward, clear. It tells us what we can and can't do. There's not, I mean, it generally is a prohibition on specifically lobbying for something.
Right.
And it was, it was created with a good purpose and that was because of the fact that you had some municipalities that they wanted a tax, so they used money that they collected from their internal revenues to say, hey, they're lobbying to the people that they're taxing with the money that the people that got taxed for earlier. So they didn't particularly care for that. So there's been, the statute's been in existence long enough also that there's some, there's some cases that clarify. I have some excerpts that I'll send you along. But yeah, absolutely designated priority lists and saying, here's where we want to spend the money, here's the intentions. I think those things are within bounds and that's, and also personally sharing something with other people on, on social media or something like that is also within bounds. But, you know, we just want to, we want to avoid certain large areas where we're, I don't think our intent is at all to, to, you know, use taxpayer dollars to try to get, try to get a lobbying effort gone. We just want to make sure people have, are pointed to where they can find out the most information about. about how we would use it. And certainly we have those abilities. I, I can tell you that Mr. Carlyle and I, Mr. Carlyle and I work well together, and he and I can both communicate and coordinate those issues. I can send board members additional information regarding that, and I can make sure that Mr. Carlyle is copied on those kind of communications with you, and Mr. Carlyle, Carlyle can make sure the same thing, communications with you guys regarding that, make sure that I'm copied on those, and that way we can coordinate.
Perfect. So Ms. Dobbins, with that being said, having that $2.2 billion unfunded list over five years, I don't know if it'll take another work session, or if we want to hash out a little bit of that right now. If we were to pie in the sky and say we have an extra $30 million next year, you know, and I don't know if that's the number, but if, again, a lot of this is hypothetical, but if the sales tax were to be passed in November, we wouldn't see the first of those dollars until after January 1 anyway. It would only be able to be collected for the first six months of the school budget, but we can't obviously budget for something we don't have. So if there were an extra $10 million that we would be having in '24, '25 hypothetically, could this board start hashing out what the next priorities would be?
So can I offer some considerations?
Sure.
In, in thinking through that. So first of all, we will, we will provide you a prioritized list based on that spreadsheet I spoke about. But I just want to point out some things in consideration, and I'm not saying there's a, there's, there's a right answer to it either way. When we think about reaching out to all of Marion County, I, I pause a little bit on reaching out in a prioritized fashion, because if people don't see their school on that prioritized list, then are they going to go, well, that doesn't impact me, I'm going to vote no on it? Or should we include all of the schools, not in a prioritized ways, but your, your half cents can help us replace all of these schools, and or renovate all of these schools, which is 90% of our schools? I, I just don't know, I just want to give that view. I don't want to lose voters because we offer a prioritized list.
No, and I understand that, but my concern about that model is hypothetically, again, a 10-year half-cent sales tax potentially going to generate about what we did in our certificate of participation. If I'm, I mean, that's just a round number, potentially, and that's not going to replace 90% of our schools. So I, I want us to be realistic and not just say, here's all of the list, here's the $2.2 billion, we're not going to bring in 2.2, we're not even bringing in a billion, not even close. So I, I just, I want to make sure that we actually are as realistic as possible and say, with this 10 years, we will be impacting every part of the county, even if it's not every school in the county. And, and so perhaps it's the feeder patterns, perhaps we make sure that we are touching, you know, pieces of feeder patterns, so if you have a child at Reddick, you may not see it, but you may see it by the time they get to North Marion Middle. And so I just, I want us to be realistic and also understanding potentially how much money this actually is, because it's not the pie in the sky number that we really need, and we know that. So those are my thoughts.
I, I, Ms. Dobbins and I have talked about this in the past, and I, I mean, I think there's a portion of it, if you say, hey, your school's second on the list, everyone in that community is probably voting for it, right? But then reversely, the people who are not affected might not. So I, I mean, I think that if the narrative even says it includes replacement of 15 elementary schools and da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da, I don't know. But my, my question is, the PDF that's on the website, because I did find the website, and there's a half-cent sales tax FAQ, which I think is wonderful. There are the benefits, which basically says very broadly, we're going to address facilities. Can this PDF be sent in a Sky Alert as an information piece? Like a Sky Alert email and a phone call, like from Dr. Gullett or Mr. Carlyle, saying, like, potentially on Monday, November, whatever day, Monday is before Tuesday?
I do not know the answer to that question. That would be something I'd have to, to check in with Staff Attorney.
Well, and then there's also early voting.
Right. Well, yeah, and I'm an early voter myself, but I'm just, the majority of people vote on the day. And so I'm just wondering legally, are we allowed, because this is an information PDF, it's not a, it just says vote, it doesn't say vote which way. So I'm just wondering to what extent we will go to communicate the narrative of our need, and if, could that include Sky Alerts to our parents? Because if we have 46,000 students, that's a lot of potential voters, and if they all voted to support this, we would, I think it would be a really strong step in the right direction. So I'm just wondering, and maybe Attorney Powers can weigh in, but are we allowed to use our Sky Alert platform to share this informational message about our facilities?
There's, there's two questions there. When you say, what can we do? We, as the board, I would advise you, I mean, that, that's the factor. Staff, as to what the district, the Marion County Public School System does outside of what the board does, that is for really the Staff Attorney to answer the question. Now, of course, Mr. Blackman and I can coordinate together on coordinated messaging, which has always been the way that the, the board and, and staff would work together anyway. But I think there is still warrants drawing a distinction between what this board will do versus what, what they will do. Likewise, the board should not really involve itself in directing operations and how to do that. It's best if you stay out of that.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we're even, if it's allowed. So I guess can Attorney Blackman look into that potentially as a feasible option?
Right, and I would encourage and ask that I, anything that Attorney Blackman does and that I do, we will information share. We're, we're kind of good at that, Mr. Carlyle can as well, so. That, that's, that's an effort that needs to happen with, with all of us.
Right. And I, I think about it, did you have something, Dr. Gullett?
No, I was just going to say, yes, we'll follow up with Attorney Blackman. I, I would just say broadly that my understanding is that we can share information. Again, just as I shared earlier, we can share information, which is our intent and which is what we are planning to do, and it is my understanding we could use Sky Alert to share information. But, but we will...
Absolutely.
But we will confirm and understood, yes.
Okay, and, and just in the spirit of how information is shared most productively and efficiently, I would say that there's things like text messages, there's things like Classroom Dojo. You know, where do the people go to get their information? And I guess I was just lucky when I opened my computer and, and it, that was the first one that popped up, and I was like, oh, look at that, that's cool. And, but now I know it's scrolling, so earlier in this conversation, the suggestion was made to maybe add a banner or, you know, a clickable tab, you know, blue box, whatever, so that, again, you know, just in case somebody opens on the, on a different scrolling informational item, that they still have the chance to see it. So I feel like what I'm hearing is that the board, it just really wants to know and, and ensure that whatever mode of communication is allowable to share the information, that you're probably already on track to thinking about doing that. We'll look forward to seeing them, maybe even receiving them.
Yeah.
As voters.
And I think that is the direction that Mr. Carlyle's been going, that, that I certainly intended to be as well. Again, the bottom line was, is to prevent the lobbying of people spending money with television ad campaigns and mailers and all kinds of stuff to send out specifically directed as to, like, like someone who is getting elected would perhaps send out campaign literature and stuff like that. Now, we can send out that information along with things that we already have in existence. So it, there's, it can be printed on our calendars, it can be printed on other materials. We can have, again, there's, there's plenty of things we can do. And the intent really is there, and we shouldn't lose the intent, because it's also not, I don't think anything within the statute or any interpretation of the statute says that it's, it requires the district or the board to place duct tapes over their mouths and look the other way anytime when someone mentions sales tax. That's clearly not the case. So we'll, we'll, we'll get through this.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So can we clarify Dr. Campbell's request? Would you like to have a work session and a prioritized list of school replacement slash renovations? Maybe late September, or do you want to keep it general for right now? Where do we want to go?
Personally, I like the idea of having a conversation. So, I mean, this is, again, we can talk about this, and I'm interested in hearing what fellow board members say. I'm interested in having the conversation, because I want to make it look like we have a plan. And it's not just $2.2 billion of projections. It's actually saying, just like we did when we went out and got the certificate of participation, it wasn't just, we're going to go and take out a 300-plus million dollar loan. No, it's going to be this school, this school, this school. And, and so if we actually, and certainly we have the ability to change our minds, but to at least get somewhere where we're saying, yeah, this looks like this would be the next priority. Like, this looks like, we, we can't keep throwing money at maintenance issues at XYZ school until we just replace that thing, and it's going to save the taxpayer so much money in the long term to just replace it, as opposed to continue to do band-A after banding. Those are the kinds of conversations, I think, just like we did on the data center, just like we did on Central Warehouse. I mean, the things that this board has done that are putting us in the position we're in now are the kinds of conversations I would welcome this board to have later this fall, to say, okay, what hypothetically would be the next project? And, and I'm going to liken it to County Commission, having their next fire stations lined up. They know which ones they need, they know where they need to be, and, I mean, they, they know the next projects. They, so if they do get the, you know, 20-year sales tax that they're asking for, they know what's next, because they already have that priority list set up. And so I understand that it may not be everybody's top priority on what the county's choosing to do. Everybody may want something else done, then, but I'm using that as an analogy to say, I welcome the conversation with these four other individuals, including the superintendent, to say, here are the next real concrete ideas that we would like to put forth in conversation. But if, if you all don't agree with that, then that's fine, too. I welcome your thoughts. Oh, go ahead.
No, I just think the conversation's great, it's fine. I just feel like Ms. Dobbins is saying that they already have a prioritized list. So I guess I'm asking, are you, are you feeling that the board is not going to be in agreeance with that? Or like, what is your concern?
I'm saying I haven't seen the priorities, other than the data center.
Thank you. No, we don't have a prioritized list. So that's, that spreadsheet I'm talking about, that we're behind the scenes working on, looking at every system, what would it cost for each school? We can most certainly bring to the board and have a conversation of what we see our recommendations are as our next priorities, and have that discussion on what you see as well. I believe we could get that done by, let's say, the end of September work session or the very beginning of October. I don't want to get any further beyond that, because that votes November 5. So I am more than happy to bring a recommendation, a prioritized list, end of September, 1st of October, and have a discussion.
If I may, Madam Chair. So Ms. Dobbins, that list could potentially then have forecasted out years of, not just priority in terms of rank order, but also years when those projects could possibly be completed. So people could see on there, it may not be year one or year two, but it could be year nine or year 10, potentially.
Yes, ma'am. What's our priority, most urgent replacement, and then what's the timeline of those prioritizations, based on what we believe we may be receiving in? Yes, ma'am.
And, and thank you for bringing up the individual school profiles. I think that is really powerful, because then anybody can click on that tab, you know, just again, because Anthony begins with A, click on Anthony. Oh, okay, this is how the Age Back system is, everything that you shared. And based on the individual school's profiles, that is a very tangible way to plan what needs to be prioritized sans, you know, an act of God or things like that. I, I think that that just helps people wrap their head around it, and, and we could even say, you know, based on the, each individual school's profile, is how we will prioritize these needs.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Listen, I'm sitting here listening to this conversation, and I'm, I would prefer, I might have a conversation, but I think we need to let Ms. Dobbins then bring it back. The reason I say is, there's five different board, five board members up here. Each one of us have representative districts that we, that we are for. I don't want us to get to the point where we are pushing our agenda for the particular districts. We're, we're serving all students.
Right.
The whole county. So I would prefer them to give us the list, and let's look at the list. I don't want us to get to the point where my schools are more important than Sarah's school or Lori's school, all of them.
All important.
All important, so.
Right. Right, and that's, I think, where the strength of the individual school profiles will tell the story. You know, if a school not in my district has a wiring from 1910, then I'm certainly not going to kick if that's at the top of the list. You know, it just helps everybody understand, you know, the what and the why, but thank you for, you know, reminding everyone that we all know that we represent districts, because our community is so large. But in the end, every kid, no matter where they are, and every staff member, no matter where they are, is, is the priority to have the right building that is safe and going to meet the needs. So I'm happy with having continued conversation. I think that's really important. And you share so much each time, that gives us more to think about. And the communication piece really is critical. So getting the information from Attorney Powers and, and via Attorney Blackman on, on what the plan is, what the communication plan is through operations, how we can support it as a board, is, will really be great to receive.
Happy to do so.
Awesome. Anything else? All right. Okay, is there any public comment? Seeing and hearing none. We shall now move on to Board Committee reports with a couple of meeting reminders. First thing we need to talk about is the next administrative briefing and work session that was supposed to be scheduled in case we needed another go-round on, on budget, but it appears that we completed that. So am I safe in being able to say that we do not need to meet for another special budget session next Thursday?
As long as Ms. Dobbins, or, not Ms. Dobbins, sorry, as long as Ms. Boston Ellis doesn't need us for anything else with the referendum conversation, as long as there's nothing else that needs to come before us. Okay?
Wow, a gift of time. All right, great. Well, that's a tribute to the on-point conversations and the great presentations that we received. All right, so the following school board meeting then is scheduled for August 27 at 5:30 PM, and then the next administrative briefing and work session, the regular one, is scheduled for September 5 at 9 AM. All right, anything from Legal? Thank you.
Nothing from Legal, thank you.
All right, Ms. Martinez?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett?
Nothing additional, thank you.
All right, Board Member Campbell?
I don't think so. Just excited that we're on day four of school, and excited to see all the students back and, and our student representatives to the board here with us on Tuesday evening. And we, we're doing a lot of good work, Board. I'm just looking forward for that to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member James?
Nothing further.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings?
Don't forget to vote.
Don't forget to, that's right, that's right. It's fast approaching. Vice Chair Conrad?
Yes, I just have one thing. I, on Thursday, so thinking about our elementary schools, and so we were fortunate enough to have stagger start this week for our Kinders. And so today, all of our kindergartners, which came up Tuesday night and slowing down transportation, and so they all are showing up for school today, just really excited, and lifting them up as we have all those little bodies on campuses today, and hope that afternoon dismissal goes smoothly. That's all.
Awesome, thank you. And, and for my part, I'll just say that for any board member that's available tomorrow morning, bright and early at 7:35 AM at Maplewood Elementary School, there is going to be the first attendance recognition for most improved attendance. They will have a banner presented, and there's a couple other schools as well. I think it's Lake Weir Middle has been scheduled, and also Forest High School for most improved attendance last year. And then I believe this is going to be a quarterly acknowledgement. So I hope in addition to being able to come to the schools to be part of that, that we can also look at recognizing these schools at the end of first quarter at an upcoming school board meeting. Board Member James?
Yeah. Who sent out that information? Just because I'd like to plan better in the future.
Right, I thought it was sent to all board members?
No.
All board members did not receive it? Okay. All right. Okay, all right, well then, we shall make sure that that happens between, you know, as, we know that's kind of my passion thing, and, but truly, we just need to get a mechanism in place so that all board members definitely get that information. And, let me see.
Would be under Ms. Delnoldal, so we'll make sure that that goes out. I don't, I didn't see who it went to either, I assumed that you all received it, so I received it in between.
Yeah, I did, too.
We'll make sure all the board has that.
I mean, even if it was sent to Ms. Martinez, and she would send us a calendar invite, I think something like that, that the board collectively has shown agreement that we're all see value in, and it's a district initiative, I would personally appreciate if the information went to Ms. Martinez, and Ms. Martinez sent us calendar invites, because then we would all know that, what it is and where it is and all the things.
Right. Calendar invites are the way to go.
Yes.
100%. All right. So, Ms. Martinez, you're good with that? Okay, I believe the other two schools, as I said, well, the three schools are Maplewood, Forest, and Lake Weir Middle. I believe that Maplewood is the first one, there has not been another one yet, and that the other two may be next week, so there's still time, hopefully, to get in on that. Okay? All right, well, I'm glad I brought that up, I was just gonna say I don't have anything for everyone's time, but we are still getting ready to adjourn, if there's nothing else for the good of the cause, at 12:29 PM. Great work, everybody. Thank you.